Call to order the meeting of the Haverford Township zoning hearing board of...
Oh, just went on.
Okay. Thursday, September 26th. President at the front table to my far left, Jessica Vitale, a voting member.
Evening.
Next to Jessica is Ed McGargy, a voting member. To my left, Ernie Angelo, our solicitor.
Good evening.
My right, Bill Rhodes, a voting member.
Good evening.
Jesse Pointman, All-Star, a voting member. And Jonathan, what's Jonathan's name? Malt, our zoning hall. Before we begin, Bill, would you like to read us the pledge? Uh, please rise if you can. Pete after me.
..............................
Alright. When last we met, we began standing requests and argument. And that's where we left off, right, Michael?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
What's that? Yeah.
Do it carefully as you come.
Um, okay. So, I know, just, uh, housekeeping items before we start there. I know both Mr. Yanoff and Ms. Kearney are aware that our chairman's daughter was recently hired, I think within the last week or so, by your law firm. So, while I don't believe there is an actual conflict present for Mr. Kane, I think it's at least important to put that on the record and to ask if counsel has any particular objection to Mr. Kane staying on and potentially voting and deciding on this matter at this time.
Our office has... Bernard Dec Kearney from Hamburg Rubin, we have no objection. Our office is set up with a litigation, real estate, and a state department. I'm in the real estate department. Ms. Kane is in the litigation department. So, she will not be involved in any way in this application. And I did let Mr. Yanoff know that.
Thank you. And I... Michael Yanoff here for the Protestants, opponents, whatever we call them today. I've spoken to my clients, and my clients have no objection to remaining seated on the board. We thank you very much for the notification. We thank Bernard for that. What I don't know is anybody here who is not represented by me, I don't know whether they would have any objection to that. So, I can't speak for them. But with respect to my clients, the answer is we have no objection. Thank you.
And just for record, I don't feel that I have any conflict of interest whatsoever, so...
And it won't affect your decision?
No, not at all.
You're just one of that family, dude.
She didn't even mention it to me, so...
Uh, so in that regard, speaking that you have individual departments, she's obviously not in your real estate department, as you indicated. She is not aware or any... Has no particular knowledge of the matter in any regard. And you would keep her kind of separate and away from this particular case as it proceeds?
Correct. Our... We, on the real estate side, handle our own litigation. So, even if it went to litigation...
She wouldn't get it?
She wouldn't get involved, no. Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody who's not represented by Mr. Yanoff, recognizing that he has the party particip... Uh, party, well, I guess opponents, interest? Have any questions or objection in this regard? Yes, sir? Come on, please.
My name's Kevin McKendry.
So, we can hear you, that's all?
My name's Kevin McKendry. I live at 621 Haverford Road.
You have... Were you given... Were you granted party status previously?
No, not. The only reason is because I viewed this online when it was broadcast, and I heard the opposite counsel referring to a few of my neighbors and friends as not being impacted because they weren't in immediate view. And then it obviously became to my attention, since I'm living at 621 Haverford Road, and I can tell you the price of gas out of my bedroom window when I'm still in bed. This does evidently impact me. But I could see as, you know, again, I'm not involved in the law, but isn't this... Couldn't there be potential conflict if, again, you have someone, an immediate family member, is of an employment of somebody who's to potentially benefit? I mean, it sounds like legally that would be maybe like a classic conflict.
No, I... I don't... Yeah, I don't think it runs the gauntlet of an actual classic conflict, because she's not involved in the case, so to speak.
There's no financial...
Yeah, and that... From a... From a ethical standpoint, there's no financial interest in it typically.
So, it's just like an internship that she's doing?
Well, no. The issue is his decision...
His salary.
His decision wouldn't impact at all any monetary benefit that she would get. The firm was already hired to represent the applicant prior to Ms. Kane being hired. So, the case had already started in that regard. So, this... His decision isn't going to impact her in any financial aspect. At least, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
But if I just heard that correct, while this case was being heard and listened to, one of the people voting on that actually had a child be hired by the same firm.
That's my understanding.
Again, I'm just... I think that sounds like maybe it's a conflict. But I'm just putting it to your attention. But I appreciate being heard.
No, and that's fine. I mean, you know, and I would, you know, look to Mr. Yanoff, who is obviously a very experienced zoning lawyer. And having him not object to it, I think helps, you know, move the case along. But also supports the idea that we can move forward, that this really isn't a conflict, so to speak.
I appreciate your time. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yep. Is there anybody else? Okay. Then we'll consider that matter resolved. I thank counsel for their courtesies in that regard. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you to where we left off on standing.
Okay. Michael, we're working down your list.
Thank you. Is it okay if I stay in here a little bit? Thank you.
Is that microphone on?
Microphone... Yeah, this microphone is on. It doesn't stretch to as far as me. I'll just move closer. Uh, I have... There is possibly five or six more people who need to be questioned with respect to the issue of standing. And I'd like to move through that if we will. And I don't know if all of them are here, but I'll start with Michelle Brown. Is she here?
Yes.
Michelle, would you like to step forward?
Michael, is she on your list, the type of...
She's on the list. She's... I don't know if your list is numbered, but it's number 12.
Okay. Got it.
And she's right in the mirror here.
Yeah. Same here, voting.
Oh, you know what? There's one right there, Michael.
One right here.
Might be faster. Okay.
I need to swear you first.
She has to swear you. You have to swear.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Michelle Brown, 36th West Avenue, Bryn Mawr, PA 19010.
Thank you, Michelle.
Ms. Brown, did you receive a notice of this... A written notice at the hearing from the township?
From the township? No.
How did you find out about the hearing?
From the Brynford Association.
Are you a m...
Jake Swan.
Are you a member of the Brynford Civic Association?
As far as being a resident in the area, yes.
Okay. And how far are you from subject property?
I would say about, uh... If I'm thinking of a football field, about 30 feet.
Okay. We have you listed as less than...
Thirty yards, I'm sorry.
Thirty yards. Less than Eagles would like to have at 30 feet, right? And those of us watching also, but that's another issue altogether. We have in our list that just in general, that you're less than 200 feet from the proposed project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And can you see the pro... Can you see the property from your house?
The rear of it, yes.
Okay. And, um...
I have no objection.
Oh, that takes care of that. Thank you. Thank you. You may just be seated.
Who's next, Michael?
Jason Johnson. Mr. Johnson here? He's not here. Thank you. Uh, Cecilia Dunlap?
Hi, Cecilia. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Cecilia Johnson Dunlap.
Your address?
I live at 760 Buckley.
760 Buckley.
760 Buckley.
Give me one moment. Cecilia, did you receive a notice of this hearing from the township?
From the township, no.
And how did you receive notice of this hearing?
Through the Brynford Civic Association.
Okay. You were one of the parties in the matter that went before the court, correct?
Yes.
And our argument has been before this board that the court granted you party status by order. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are you able to see the property from your... From your house?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And how far generally are you from there?
It's about a block.
You have any questions?
Yeah, I have an objection. This is more than... Even in court, we noticed that this is more than 1,000 feet from the property. So, it's, um... Ms. Dunlap would have the same concerns that any regular citizen living anywhere in the township would have. It's... The case law is it's the proximity to the subject property that really brings forth standing. Once you start getting further and further away, you have the same concerns as any regular citizen.
If I may respond... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If I may respond to that, the law does not make distance from the project the sole determining factor. The witness indicated that she could see the property from her home, and the court granted her party status pursuant to a court order. I understand Ms. Kearney's position that she needs to raise that objection again this evening, but the judge granted her party status when we took the appeal from the last determination of this board. So, I believe that that would control.
And I just have to note for, should this go up on appeal, that my objection is on the record, or I've lost the right to do so.
Questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think the...
Alright. Let's put it to a vote. Bill?
In... Consistent with our approach during the last meeting, where your neighbor, who lives at 760, is that correct? Is your next door neighbor?
Josh is above me at 762.
Yeah, you're 762, he's 760, right?
I'm 760. He's 762.
And it was... His party status request was denied, and I would deny yours too for the same reason.
I had it granted. Is that not accurate?
I haven't missed denied.
Jesse?
I would vote to deny.
Jessica?
I would vote to deny.
Ed?
Vote in favor.
I would vote to deny.
Diane Durant Law?
Diane, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got? And your full name and address, please, for the record?
Diane Durant Law. And my address is 738 Rugby Road. At Bryn Mawr.
And Diane, did you receive notice of this hearing from the township?
No.
Okay. How did you find out about the hearing?
Well, I was at the previous hearing and was aware of it being continued on this date.
And did you... Were you one of the individuals who attempted to enter her appearance at the very first hearing in this matter?
Yes.
Okay. And were you granted party status by the court, by a court order?
Yes, I was.
Are you able to see the property from your... From your home?
I can, especially from an upper floor.
Okay. And how far are you from the subject property?
I'm, give or take, between 500 and 700 feet, I think.
But you definitely can see the property from your house?
It's, in particular, the front of the property. The entryways from Haverford Road in particular.
So, you can see the egress... Accessing egress driveways from your home?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have on standing.
And again, I have to note my objection. I have more than 1,000 feet, and I'm looking at P1 with the red circle that was provided by the association. Rugby Road is outside that circle. So, I think it's too far to be granted party status.
What is the radius of the circle?
I believe he... I... I forgot off the top of my head.
He testified 500 feet.
I thought it was 500.
500 feet, I believe. However, I once again remind the board that she was granted party status. She actually entered her... Diane actually entered her appearance at the very first hearing when the appeal was taken. And at the hearing on that appeal before the court in Delaware County, she was granted party status. So, I don't believe... With all due respect to this board, I don't believe this board has the right to deny her that status in view of the orders.
Can I ask you a question? Were any of the appallants denied party status by the court?
No.
Were any of the appallants questioned as to proximity or other issues that we would focus on in standing in those court hearings?
No, except that there was argument concerning their location and arguments concerning their entry or attempted entry of appearance at the last hearing. So, the court took that, I believe, to suggest. The court took that consideration at the time that the argument was had. But the direct answer to your question is no. There was no... There was no inquiry about how far they were from the...
And were any decisions about standing by the court done on an individual basis?
Well, the caption of the case named the individuals.
I know, but I'm...
So, the court did not engage in any questioning of individuals.
Thank you.
And Bernard, did you object to Diane as well?
Yes.
Let's put it through.
And again, I have to make the objection now, so people understand, so that I have the right if this goes up on appeal. I lost my right if I don't do it here.
Bill?
I would deny on the same basis, which is the distance. Rugby Road's at least two blocks around the corner, down Haverford Road. She lives halfway up the block on that street. I question her the ability to actually see the project from her house. And we have denied other people who have come before this party status for the same reason.
Jesse?
Deny.
Jessica?
I would vote to deny.
Ed?
Vote to approve.
I would vote to deny.
Thank you. Doreen Sar.
Hi, Doreen.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. We see each other to...
Yeah.
... these things.
Always at these things.
Yes. Well, we should probably correct that.
I think you're right. I need to swear you in. Please raise your right hand.
Right hand, okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
Yes.
And your full name and address for the record?
Doreen Sar, 748 Rugby Road.
Thank you.
And I am one of those people who appeared at the first meeting and was... I was a party to the case that went up in Delaware County and actually sat through the discussion in Delaware County, because it's so fascinating.
Did you receive a notice of this hearing from the township?
No, I did not.
And can you see the property from your house?
No.
But you were granted status by the... By party status by the court, is that correct?
Yes, I was.
And did you also get party status or were able to testify at the first hearing?
No.
No party status, but you were able to testify, right?
Yes, we testified. And in fact, part of the reason that we... We came back to the court was that we were so surprised, having given our testimony, at the outcome, that we moved forward with this.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
The same objection, it's...
Three. Three.
Yes.
Can you just wait a minute? Just wait a second till they make their questions.
No questions, Bill?
Uh, yeah, you did have a chance to express your views in the public comment period on the product. And you know you'll have that opportunity in this case too, right?
Yes.
And for the same reasons that we've talked about, which is lack of proximity, I would deny your request.
Jesse?
I agree to deny.
Jessica?
Agreed to deny.
Ed?
I... I think that we should grant party status.
I would agree on this one, but party status is denied.
Me too.
Thank you. Jeff Day?
Is he on your list, Michael?
He's a... He was an add-on.
Which is very helpful, by the way.
Thank you. I had nothing to do with its creation.
But he's your exhibit.
I say when somebody asks, "Do they like my tie?", I tell them, "I have nothing..." This is not all the way. I had nothing to do with its selection.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got? And your full name and address for the record, please?
Jeffrey Allen Day, 708 Preston Avenue, Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania, 19010.
Thank you. Mr. Day, did you receive notice from the township of the... Of these proceedings?
No, I did not.
Okay. How far are you from subject property?
110 feet.
Can you see the property from your house?
I don't... I don't believe I can. I mean, I haven't actually tried to look at our second story window. No leaves on the trees, but I don't believe I can.
But you're only 100 feet or so from the property?
110 feet from the property, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
And Mr. Day, how did you determine the 110 feet?
As the crow flies. Mapping app a couple of...
If you wouldn't mind. I just don't, uh... Mr. Yanoff hadn't provided me with your address. I'm just trying to see on this plan. Here's Preston Avenue?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm close. We're like the third house up. We're in a little twin, so it's like the third structure up on the left-hand side, Preston Avenue. I mean, it's an easy walk, right? Basically across Haverford Road.
Okay.
Kiddy corner into the...
And so, I'm sorry, how did you measure it? I couldn't hear you. Did you say an app?
Like as the crow flies? If you just... I mean, one, you could walk it.
This is the property.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. So, we're here. Not all the way up here. We're here... Hold on. Preston Avenue, we're this side. We're like right here. So, I just...
But you're on the other side of Haverford Road?
I'm on the north side of Haverford Road, 708 Preston Avenue. It's like the third structure off of Haverford Road from Preston.
Okay. Um, I didn't have a chance, because it wasn't on the list, to measure this, but I think it's more than 110 feet if he's on the other side of Haverford Road. So, I'm gonna object.
Clearly, your previous argument that within 500 feet, so... Yeah. So, you know, you can't have it both ways.
Yeah. My thing is, is he's near number five on your list. I objected to that, because it's too far. And he seems to be on the other side of the road. So, number five was Sligo. I understand they were granted party status. But they're beyond Preston Road on this side of Haverford. He's on the other side of Haverford.
The problem is, you argued against one of the... One of the participants, because they were more than 500 feet.
Yeah, and I think he is...
And you use the chart. He testified, you don't know.
Yeah.
He testified that he's certainly within 500 feet.
But I don't... I can't... He has nothing to show to me to show it's 500 feet.
There's no question. I mean, I can... I'll... I'll... I mean, I... We have Wi-Fi. We could pull up the...
Not necessary.
I can show you.
No, no. Bernard, she put her objection on the record. Michael made his argument. Questions from the board? Bill, how do you vote?
So, I just want to make sure. So, you're on the third house up Preston, you said?
The third physical structure.
Uh, as you're going up?
On a twin on Preston Avenue, on the left-hand side.
And as you're going, it's on the left side?
Yes.
Alright, I don't... I'm okay with any party status.
Jesse?
I would vote against.
Jessica?
I would vote against.
Ed?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. And I have one more. You just heard from Kevin McKendry.
Kevin, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got? And your full name and address for the record, please?
Kevin Daniel McKendry, and I live at 621 Haverford Road in Haverford, Pennsylvania, 190...
And Kevin, how do you spell your last? Had it right.
Kevin, did you receive notice of this hearing from the township?
No.
How is it that you learned of the hearing?
Just in the neighborhood, you know. I... And again, I saw online that this was being rebroadcast. I don't know if through what. I went to the link, and I, you know, watched, you know, and then that's when I, as I mentioned earlier, you know, heard that it seemed like you were only taking the points of the people who were immediately in visual impact. So, you know, I came tonight.
And how far are you from the subject property?
Either gonna be questioned pretty tight. It's noticeable, but I would say I'm within probably 220 feet.
I have no further questions.
Bernard?
Um, if I could show you this, um... Because again, wasn't provided. Yeah. Are you one of these properties?
I am this.
Got it.
Let me just make sure of that. Wait, hold on. So, box here. I am... Sorry. This is my house.
I'm sorry, which one?
This lot right here.
This lot down here?
I guess this is 621 Haverford Road. Is this Millbrook right here then? Is that here?
I'm not sure.
Block would be there, okay. You're not from the area?
Not this area, no.
For the record. So here's, yeah, again, this is my house. I'm the original house, I'm told of this hundred block. And from my bedroom window, I can look in plain view of this sign, and I can tell you again what the change in gas costs are.
Okay.
I was also never notified when there was a gas leak at this property, which I would have liked to.
Yeah, that's, that's got nothing to do with this right now, Kevin.
Okay.
I'm going to check to anything related to that. Um, I'll, I'll have no objection to that.
Hi. Hi. I have two more people.
You would never.
Probably never.
Your party status is granted, you can have a seat, Kevin.
Thank you.
Gina Caesar?
Please raise your right hand, Gina, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, help you got?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Gina Seizing, S I E S I N G, I'm at 320 Buck Lane.
Say it again, sorry.
S I E S I N G, I think I was on the original list, Michael.
Gina, what was your address again?
320 Buck Lane.
Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, did you receive notice of hearing?
We received an earlier notice for July 18th, but not this one, but we were at the prior.
Okay, and can you see the property from your house?
Yes, we're right directly across the railroad tracks.
Okay, would you, if you had an estimate in feet, how would, how much would you say?
I don't really know, 300-ish, but we're.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sorry, we're literally the next building, I don't know how to measure it, we're right across the railroad tracks.
Okay, I have no further.
And just a quick question, you said 320 Buckley Avenue?
Yeah.
And I have that as on Mr. Yanoff's list as Deb Morley?
Yep, that's my wife, yep, and she was granted status.
Yes, and I think Deb was already granted party status, I have no objection.
Hey. You have party status?
Thank you, I have one, Marilia Marion.
You saved the difficult names for last, Michael. Where's Marilia?
Marilia. You're not seeking party status? Okay. No, I'm not, we're not going to go forward with party. Thank you. And that is, I conclude.
Is there anyone else not represented by Michael that wishes to request party status? Okay, finally, we're through with the party status argument.
I think Mr. Yanoff had indicated we were speaking on the phone that you had the resolution that was requested.
Yes, I was just about to bring that up.
Yep.
At the last hearing, there was a question about whether Mr. Swan had the ability to speak on behalf of Brinford Civic Association. There was an issue, we brought him up standing, but also in his own right, but also on behalf of the association. And we now have a resolution, which I'd like to mark, and just tell me, it's our first wit, our first.
Well, I think you're up to P4.
Yeah.
You are, okay. Maybe it's not our first.
Well, wait, I have, as P1, uh, is the math, right? P2 is the Brinford Civic list. P3.
It was a letter that was withdrawn. It was the letter from Michael Rouse that was withdrawn.
P3 was the letter that I objected to, and then this.
And then the gentleman came and testified, said that letter was withdrawn.
The letter was withdrawn, so then that.
So this should be P3.
P3.
And this is a Brinford Civic resolution?
This resolution authorizes Mr. Swan to appear on behalf of the Civic Association, which is what the board requested at the last year.
Great, did you see this? You going to copy this?
No, just, just right now, yeah, on the screen.
Want to take a quick moment just to?
I'll take a quick look, yeah.
Michael, it's Jacob.
I'm sorry?
It's Jacob, right?
Jacob, what, who is the individual that was granted? Jake's, Jake.
Mr. Swan? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no questions on it.
Thank you. May I, maybe just revisit the standing matter for one more person I've just been advised has been requested, has requested, standing.
One more person?
One more.
Sure.
Star Simpson.
Hello, please raise your right hand, do you swear, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, help you got?
I do.
And your full name and address, please, for the record.
Harris Simpson, I have two addresses involved in this, 703 Buck Lane and 630 Haydock.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second one.
630 Haydock.
Ms. Simpson, did you receive notice, tierary notice from the township?
I do not recall getting any written notice, I, my commissioner sent an email.
And can you see the property from your house?
From 703 Buck, yes.
That where you reside?
No, we live at 630 Haydock.
You have ownership interest at 703 Buck?
Yes, we own it.
You own that property? And how far is 703 Buck from the property?
It's one house away from the intersection, and when the wind blows, our neighbor trees, the light from the gas station turns our security lights off and on all the time, and so it's pretty close.
It sounds pretty close. Thank you. I have no questions, hang on, hang on.
Uh, did you say the distance for the 703? I didn't.
Well, we're, we're one house from the intersection.
One house from the intersection, okay. I don't have any objection.
Thank you.
Party status is granted. Any others, Michael, or shall we move on?
I think we can move.
Okay. Hey, Michael, you have a witness that you have with you tonight, right? I was told.
Yeah, we have, if I may, we have a traffic engineer here.
Okay.
Bernadette and I have discussed, as Karen and I have discussed, that she's going to put her line on, then her traffic engineer. testify.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense, allow the traffic experts to testify, get through that, in that way, those experts don't have to stay for this, or have to be recalled at a later date.
All right. What do we have next, Bernadette?
I'm sorry?
What's next?
Okay. Just briefly, so, as indicated on your screen, we're here for the variance for the use of what was the auto repair portion on the property. This was a case that was heard last August before you, went up to the court, it was remanded back. You're probably very familiar with the property and what occurred last year, so I'm not going to go into a bunch of details so we can get to some of these witnesses. Sure.
So the, the transcript from the August hearing, and we've all agreed incorporated by reference into this?
I'm, I'm happy to agree to that if Mr. Yanoff is.
The, the difficulty with that, I'm sorry, the difficulty with that is that the court order doesn't say that. The court order says that the matter has to be tried, haven issue, and the entire, the entire case has to be retried. That's, that's my reading of the order, I understand what, what the rationale is, but that's, that is what the order says. So it's remanded for further proceedings, that to guarantee an opportunity for the appellant's to be heard, which they'll all get a chance to be heard, whether it's party or it's public. And this appeal will be on a complete record, doesn't say a denova, haven issue, or anything like that. The reviewing court will be able to engage in a meaningful appellate review. I'm not sure that the prior hearing was void, haven issue, and that we're starting all over again.
I'd be happy not to, but.
When I read the complete, when I, when I read it as complete record, I read it differently, but I think you also have to go beyond and see what the court says about a supplemental hearing. And it says the zoning hearing board shall, one, allow appellants to document all objections to the proposed variance, afford appellants the opportunity to present evidence, and cross-examine witnesses. So we can't do that unless the witnesses testify, because it'd be very difficult to go back and forth between transcripts. So when I read this, I read this that to afford us the opportunity to cross-examine, the witness has to testify again. So are all of your original witnesses going to be able to testify again, or be cross-examined? No? I don't know.
Uh, yeah, what ends up happening is Robbie is going to testify again, Mr. John Teetz is going to testify again, Mr. Dave Damon is going to testify again, and as the order indicated, we're allowed to have more testimony, we both have traffic experts who are going to testify. So, yes, we're pretty much following the same.
Yanoff, have you seen the transcript of your? Yes, I've read it. I'm just thinking about, you know, judicial efficiency here. Does it make sense to force the applicant to start the entire thing over? I mean, we're giving the relief that the court ordered. Everyone's going to get a chance to be heard, even if they felt that, even if they were heard before and didn't like how the result came out, they'll get to be heard again. That's only part of the, the problem is, as I read it, it's only part of the order. And in order for us to present, coaching cross-examination, there needs to be direct examination. And there was, there was testimony at the first hearing, but it, it's easy, in my opinion, it's easier for the, for this board to hear the testimony fresh, and not have to go back and forth between the transcript and cross, transcript and cross. Then I, I'm trying to figure out what, what's the ground rule?
I mean, I would look at Ms. Kearney to indicate, you know, it's your case. Obviously, you want to submit the record that was there previously, and ask us to take judicial notice, we do that. You obviously run the risk of, you know, a lack of particulars in that hearing, you know, so to speak. But I guess, Mr. Yanoff, the question I have for you is, you would technically be able to call those witnesses as on cross in your case in chief, correct?
Yes, but I don't want, I don't want to try it that way. It's not, I, they become my witnesses then, and I don't want them as my witnesses.
But you'd still be able to cross-examine them?
No, I certainly, well, I'd be able to, I'd be able to treat them, I guess, in the civil setting as a hostile witness, and I'd be able to do that.
So you would technically have the same, same ability to question them as you, you would have if they were on direct, or at least cross-examination. The question you have is, you wouldn't be able to respond to specific questions that Ms. Kearney would have that they would then answer, and you'd be able to, to address those questions and those, those particular testimony.
Right.
Let's take five.
Okay.
Because I don't understand some of this stuff. We're going to take five. All right. We're, we're going to resume. They want to sit there?
I'm going to hand out the exhibit book that I already gave you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Bernadette. Thank you. Yes, yes.
I'm not sure where you wanted the witnesses to stand, so that they're near microphones, does?
They typically stand there, and you would stand there.
I can stand over there, okay. Just briefly, I handed out an exhibit booklet, and what you'll see in there is a lot of this is, was part of the exhibits that were from last August. Obviously, we've added Dave Horner's CV, and we've added his traffic impact assessment. I've added some ordinance sections, which are A11, A12 is the, your zoning hearing board decision from last year, and A13 is a property photo. But the others are the same exhibits that were from last year. And at this time, Robbie, who testified first last year, will also be testifying.
How are you, please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, help you got?
I do.
And your full name and, and the capacity in which you appear, please?
My name is Raj Binder Singh Moltani, full name, everyone calls me Robbie.
Definitely need you to spell that.
Sure, Raj Binder, R A J B I N D E R, last name Moltani, M U L T A N I. I handle operations at the site.
Okay.
And just briefly, Michael and I had agreed Robbie's father is, I'm going to spell this for you. We call him Steve, but his official name is?
Satwinder. Yes.
S A T W I N D E R, Moltani, same last name, is one of the members of the LLC that owns the property. And we've agreed, Michael and I agreed, that although Steve is here, we would let, allow Robbie to testify.
Good.
And Robbie, can you explain your relationship to the applicant, Sun and Raj LLC?
Yes, I handle operations at the site.
And Sun and Raj Fuel LLC is the record owner of the property?
That's correct.
And A3 is a copy of the deed in the exhibit booklet?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Yes, a copy of the deed for the property, and you purchased, Sun and Raj purchased the property in January of 2012?
That's correct.
And, um, as, as I indicated, zoning relief was partially granted in 2023, and we've marked that as exhibit tab A12, correct, that decision?
Yes.
And that decision indicates a denial of the use of the green LED lights in place of red, correct?
That's correct.
And you're agreeing to withdraw that request?
That's correct.
Okay, so the request that we see up on the board for the LED lights, it's, I believe, the last one. You agree that's being withdrawn?
Correct.
And the conditions listed in the decision were all storage units and storage vehicles shall be removed, and the project will be completed with one, within one year. And you're agreeable to those conditions, should the, should the board grant the relief again?
Yes, that's correct.
And can you describe for the board what is currently on the property?
We have a gas station on site, four fueling positions, with a empty two-bay garage.
And how many pumps are there?
Four.
And, um, is there diesel?
Yes, that's the fifth, sorry, apologize.
I'm sorry, say it again?
That would be the fifth location, yes, there is diesel, yes.
And, um, how many cars at one time can be at all the pumps?
Eight.
And the, you also have a little store?
That's correct.
At the property, and you've always had the ability to sell bottles of water and chips?
That's correct.
And can you briefly describe for the board what's inside this store?
Bottles, bottles of water, various sodas, chips, candy, tasty cakes, oil, various products for cars and stuff.
And the register to purchase?
Correct, register and the lottery machine as well.
And actually, um, I wanted to ask, I believe Mr. Walco had sent a letter, I did not include it as part of the exhibit booklet package. I wasn't sure if the board was going to mark it.
No, we're not.
I had copies. And then, if, if the board is acceptable, I'll mark Mr. Walco, who's the solicitor for the township, his August 8th email to Mr. Angelos, and it was copied to Mr. Yanoff. Yeah, I'll mark it, if A14 is okay.
Thank you. This is a, a number?
A14?
A14.
One of the items in the, inside the, um, building that's of the property is a pay somatic machine. One of the agreements, or one of the conditions that Mr. Walco had indicated, that the applicant shall be required to remove the non-pay somatic game of skill machine from the premises, and shall be permitted to retain the pay somatic game of skill machine presently on the premises. The applicant shall only be permitted to have one licensed game of skill machine on the premises moving forward. Any permitted game of skill machine or other applicable amusement device must maintain a valid license from Haverford Township. So I wanted to indicate that, yes, there is the pay somatic and the non-pay somatic machine. The non-pay somatic machine, I'm going to ask Robbie if that will be removed, and the pay somatic machine will remain and will be licensed.
And it has been removed.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to object to the introduction of this letter, because it presupposes an action by this board, and it's our conditions for approval, assuming the board grants approval. But it also contains information that goes beyond the property. If she was to ask whether she's, whether, how many machines are going to be in, in the place, or whether he intends to keep them there, I have no problem with that. But I don't, I don't agree that the letter should be worn.
So you would agree that the township is least applied to this matter, correct?
Certainly, a township is party.
All right, so Mr. Walco represents the township. And this letter, on its broadest, is providing this board with the township's position of the case. In lieu of having Mr. Walco, in lieu of, in lieu of Mr. Walco being here to present the township's position, this letter indicates what the township's position is.
Yes, but that's not why it's being offered. It's being offered merely to talk about the pay somatic game machine. And the, the comments go beyond that, and presuppose a granted relief by the board.
Well, presumably, Mr. Walco could say if the board were to grant this relief even before the board granted it, this would be conditions that the township would like to see on that, and he could do that during public comment, but he not?
As part of the township's case in chief, yes, but not.
Well, I think he, I, I think he, I think, yeah, but I think he could do it to, to rectify this, then we would have Mr. Walco come in and, and.
I'm not asking him to come in, I'm merely saying that the offer of proof doesn't match the entire document itself.
Well, and you would agree with me that at least the rules of evidence are lax in this hearing, correct? And that the board?
No, I actually would agree, Mr. Yanoff.
Yeah, I, I agree, but the board could accept this, and grant it whatever, you know, the appropriate weight it sees fit for this, correct?
Obviously, the board has it within its ability, my objection is over.
And the other reason it would be offered is, is that these are conditions that the township is, if, is the township's request, that if the zoning hearing board was to grant the applicant's request of relief, such relief be subject to the following conditions. I would up, I, I would need to ask the applicant if he's agreeable to those conditions. And it does indicate that I had indicated to Mr. Walco that the applicant was.
I'll watch you proceed with some of those questions.
Yeah. And Robbie, you have a pay somatic skill machine and a non-pay somatic machine?
Uh, we've removed the non-pay somatic machine already.
You've already removed the non-pay somatic machine? And you're in agreement with, I'm not going to reread it, but the condition listed in number one, that that?
Yes.
Yes, and that it will be, the pay somatic machine will be licensed?
That's correct.
Um, taking this a little out of order, because there's a second condition in there. You're aware of the new definition of convenience store, which is marked in, one of the ordinances is marked in exhibit A11 as to convenience store. And it's highlighted there, you've read that?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're in agreement with Mr. Walco's condition, request a condition, that you must comply with the current definition of the Haverford Township Zoning Code, a convenience store?
Yes.
And, um, the premises may not be used as a significant tobacco real, re, I'm sorry, retailer, as such term is defined in the Haverford Township Zoning Code. Exhibit tab A11 also lists that definition of significant tobacco retailer?
Yes.
You've read that, and you're in agreement with that?
Yes.
And I apologize, we got a little off track there. You do not sell cooked items at the store, correct?
Correct.
And it is, there's no cooking and no grilling?
Correct.
And with the requested relief in the convenience store that will be on the property, you are not going to have cooked items, there'll be no cooking, no grilling?
That's correct.
So it would be prepackaged items?
Yes.
One of the questions at the last hearing was, would you continue to have auto-related items there?
That's correct, we will. That's correct, we will.
And just briefly explain what those auto-related items are?
Various consumables for cars, oils, antifreeze, windshield washer fluids, stuff like that.
And how many businesses do you and your father run in the area?
Three to four.
And can you just briefly describe them?
Other Phillips 66 stations on Cityline Road and the 76 station down on Drexel Hill.
And can you describe what has happened with the auto repair business that was at the property?
The auto repair business has been suffering greatly. Mr. Matt Wallace, who was our tenant there, said that he was no longer able to sustain his business, and that he was going to have to shutter his doors. And we brought him on board as our manager and supervisor at our locations just because we had a good relationship with him. And since we were working together on changing over that used and something better.
And there were two bays, correct?
That's correct.
How many employees are on site now? And how many will you have when the convenience, if the convenience store is granted?
There's usually two on site, and it'll remain the same.
And can you briefly describe the hours of operation?
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
And then is anything being removed from the property since the auto repair would no longer be operating?
Hydraulic lifts will be removed from the property. There's some storage containers that contain equipment for that auto repair shop. Storage containers? You're welcome. And I think that's, anything related to the auto, automobile repair business is being removed?
Say that last part again?
Anything being, anything that's related to the automobile repair business will be removed.
And at the last hearing, they were asking about the trash enclosure. Can you explain what's going on with that?
I believe Mr. Teetz is going to be able to better explain the situation with the trash enclosure. But we are building, we have a trash container that's being moved to wherever Mr. Teetz is going to find that will go.
And then it'll be enclosed?
It'll be enclosed.
And can you describe the maximum delivery vehicle? One of the questions at the last zoning hearing was the size of those.
Yeah, 40-foot container, box, yeah, box truck is 40-foot long.
Say that again?
Forty feet long, box truck.
Box truck, and you don't normally get something bigger?
We get the tanker trailers to deliver fuel. Those are like 45 feet long.
But for the actual convenience store?
No, no longer than 40 feet.
And when do the deliveries usually occur?
Those are happening in the morning time, between 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
And where is the loading, where does that occur?
Usually it happens on the right, if you're looking at the building, to the right side. Those guys will pull into there, unload, and be on their way from that side.
And since you've owned the property, you've had the little store at the property?
That's correct.
And were you aware if the store was there before that?
It was, yes.
And the size is, there's no intent to enlarge the auto repair area, those two bays, that is where the convenience store is going?
Correct, the auto structure is not going to expand.
And, but we're providing parking, and Mr. Teetz and Mr. Damian will testify to that?
That's correct.
And... Can you just briefly, there are other uses permitted? You're Zon C2 Neighborhood Commercial, correct?
Yes.
And there's other use permitted in that district, including restaurants, personal service, and office use. Can you explain, in your opinion, why those would not work at the site?
Objection. You offer it as a land planning expert, offer it as a land planning expert, that's the testimony that a land planner would provide, not the property owner, as to whether their proposed uses or other uses within the district can be utilized at this particular site. This man does not have the expertise for that.
I'm asking him as the owner of the property why he would not consider those other permitted uses?
No, you didn't ask him that. You said, "What are the, are any of the uses complicated?"
Can you rephrase the question?
In your opinion, as the property owner, why would, why would you not consider those other uses, restaurants, personal service, and office use?
Objection.
Should answer.
I guess, I mean, he's, the question seems to be testimony as to his ownership, experience, and operation of the site, correct?
Sure.
And I think he can testify to his operation and ownership and his experience. I don't think he's testifying directly as offering an expert opinion. I think this is more of a factual testimony.
The problem is the question presupposes certain expert knowledge about whether or not other proposed uses, other uses permitted, not proposed, other uses permitted within the zoning district are appropriate for this location. He's not qualified to give that testimony. He can testify about his own use and whether that's appropriate, but he can't testify about whether other uses can be, can be made on that site.
So you don't think he should be allowed to testify if he's considered other permitted uses and looked into the opportunities to use his own property for other permitted uses?
That question hasn't even been asked.
I know, but...
You know, I'm not, I'm hoping that, I'm not hoping anything. What I'm saying is that that question has not been, and that foundation has not been laid.
I would sustain the objection. Rephrase it.
Okay. Robbie, did you look at the C2 zoning district and see what other uses are permitted?
Yes.
Okay. And can you explain, as the operator of the property, what other uses you looked at and considered for use of the auto repair portion of the property?
Objection.
I think he can testify to what other uses he has considered for the property. She's not asking him specifically what uses he believes are proper for, or conducive for the site. She's asking him what uses he's considered for the site.
If he has it, my question is, has he considered?
Well, I agree with you there. But I think the question's close enough that where she's going, then I'll ask somebody.
So we're not looking, we're not restaurant operators, or we don't look to see that a office building could fit in that size of a building? And as a gas station already existing, we don't expect the, the convenience store is an accessory use to the gas station?
See, there's the conclusion, right there. That's why I object. Not, I would that that be strict.
I will give it the proper...
Okay. Chairman says noted objection, or we'll give it the proper way.
Oh, to, from operating, you, you've been at the property since 2012, correct?
Yes.
And you're at the property, how often are you at the property?
Almost every other day, yeah.
And from your personal observations, do customers park at the pump if they're going inside?
Yes.
Do they come in and pay inside?
That's correct.
And so while they're paying, do they sometimes buy?
They'll grab, they'll grab a snack, they'll grab a pack of cigarettes, they'll grab a bottle of soda, yes, that's correct.
And as part of the, part of the auto repair business, in your personal observations, how many cars were there on the property that were related to the auto repair business?
While the auto repair business was in business, we had six to eight cars at any time on the property.
And... Did that create any issues with parking?
Yes, because the cars would sit there all day, and they wouldn't move until the mechanic had an opportunity to repair those vehicles.
And in your personal opinion, can you explain to the board why you are requesting the variance for the convenience store?
I believe some people in this township misunderstand what we really want to do with this building. We just kind of want to spruce up this inside. We're not looking to make a million dollars off of this. We're looking to make a place for people to come in, get a snack, pay for their gas, and move on. This isn't a facility where people are coming in to grab hoagies or a Wawa, or a QuickTrip, or a Royal Farms. This is simply for you to grab a bag of chips while you pay for your gas and be on your way. A quick in-and-out facility that I believe the township would benefit from.
I'm sorry, say the last part again?
That I believe the township would benefit from.
I think that's all the questions I have of Robbie.
Michael?
Yes. Are you, are you familiar at all with the provisions of the Haverford Township zoning ordinance with respect to uses in the C2 district?
Does he have an expert? No, sir.
I didn't ask if he had an expert. I guess if you're familiar.
A little, yes.
Thank you. Did you read section 182-403, C2 Neighborhood Commercial District requirements of permitted uses?
Yes.
If I suggested to you, sir, that uses of right, uses by right have a definition within the code. And it says, "In any C2 district, land, buildings, or premises may be used or occupied by only one of the following." Do you see that, Ed?
Yes, sir.
Now, your proposal here is to have two uses, correct? A convenience store and a gas station.
The convenience store is an accessory.
Well, that's your opinion, sir, but that's not what your application requests. Your application requests two uses on this property. One, a convenience store, and one, and I'm going to call it a gasoline service station, but I want to ask you a question about that.
Sure.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that violates the terms of section...
Well, I'm going to object, that's, that's the whole point. It's right up there on the board, we're here for the variance.
It is not. You're, you're bound by, no. Your application asks for a convenience store. The problem is that there's an existing use.
Right, to allow the use of the property as a vehicle, I'm reading off the screen...
Advertisement.
Refueling with a convenience store.
Well, but the Haverford Township code doesn't have convenience store as an accessory use of a gas station, or a gas station as an accessory use to a convenience store.
All right.
So you have to have...
But hold on, I don't, I don't think they're asking for it as an accessory use determination, they're asking for it as a variant.
That's my point.
Yeah, for a variant.
I think that's the reason for the hearing.
Yeah, the whole reason we're here.
They're requesting a variance for both the use of the gas station and the convenience.
Let's read this carefully. It says, "They seek a variance from section 403B1 to allow the use of the property as a vehicle refueling facility with a convenience store." There are two definitions in the Haverford Township zoning rules. One covers convenience store, that's a use. The second covers vehicle refueling facility, that is a separate use. They are asking for two uses on the same site, which violates the terms of the zoning ordinance on its face.
And I'll agree, Annie Niemann, who was the attorney here last time, actually says that in the testimony. We're asking for two uses on the property. I don't think, I don't think there's any disagreement about that.
Well, she stipulated to it, so...
Yeah.
And I think the, the width, you're looking at that as, as a, combining the two as a singular use?
That's what she's doing, that's the problem. I mean, it's not a singular use.
But I think, I think the request is for a variance to allow the two uses on the site, correct? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you would agree that those two uses under the zoning code are not permitted by right, and you would have to seek a variance for those uses, correct?
Are you, yes, yes, yes. And I think that was from the last hearing, that was kind of made clear at the last hearing. We've recognized, we're allowed to have the, what we're calling the vehicle refueling facility, because it exists today. The auto repair is leaving, we're putting a convenience store in there. Your definitions in your code separate the two. You do not allow, your convenience store definition doesn't allow gas. So if I'm a Wawa, and I wanted to go on that site, I can't, unless it's a Wawa without gas.
I happen to disagree with the characterization of the application, quite frankly. The application asks for a gasoline service station, to reuse the gasoline service station. And again, we have to look at the definitions of the code, and there are two definitions. One is a gasoline service station, and the second is a vehicle refueling facility. They are two separate uses. The application asks for a gasoline service station. Now...
So isn't, that's basically legal argument at this point, right? I mean, is this, is this witness, is this witness able to actually testify to any of that? He's not, he's not an attorney. You know, I think, I think it's stipulated that, obviously, the, the uses that they're asking for are not permitted on the site. You can't have two uses on the site.
Yes, you can't have two uses on the site. The current existing fuel pumps are going to remain. The auto repair part isn't. We have to ask for variance to allow that on the site.
No, what I, what I think Michael's saying is the variance is, because you're having two uses on there, the variance request would be for both uses. Is that your argument?
And, and the application should have said to allow two uses on one site, which it didn't say. It's, what they're trying to do is they're trying to slide in, for lack of a better word.
I don't know if that's the case.
Well, I'm not saying intentionally, I'm merely saying the language does. Trying to make one use out of what is clearly two uses on this property. And if you were going to ask for that, the proper request for a variance should have been to allow, in a C2 district, to allow more than one use on the property. And they didn't ask for that. Instead, they tried to tell you that a vehicle refueling facility with a convenience store is one use. And it's not, not under the code. And so the application is faulty.
Well, again, this is a remanded application.
Exactly for this reason, exactly for this reason.
But it wasn't, it wasn't raised, wasn't raised in the appeal.
Yeah, it didn't have to be. The appeal was based upon lack of standing.
Yeah, but if...
Well, you can't, you have to base appeal on a substantive basis.
Yeah, I mean...
That appeal was not, no. That appeal was purely to get, to get a remand, because standing was not afforded to, to people who had asked for standing. That was the sole...
No, 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 I disagree with it. But we're not going to litigate all of that here again. So, but, are you asking us to dismiss the case, Michael?
I'm asking that it would have to be re-advertized, and it would have to have the correct request for a variance, because this request for a variance is not correct.
You know, don't you think it would have been a little bit more efficient for you to have asked this question before we've had two hearings and dragged all these people through the township into two hearings, having experts and lawyers sitting in the room billing their clients that time? If you wanted this to be dismissed so that the applicant could turn right around and resubmit, and the township could then bear the cost of sending the notices out to all the same people again to bring us all back here and do it again over what I consider a very hyper-technical reading by you of a variance that I think in the overall relief requested is clearly counter.
If you could point to me a section in the MPC that allows pre-trial motions, and where I could have raised it before the commencement of this proceeding, then I would agree.
I think professional courtesy would have been to raise it with the solicitor and the opposing counsel outside of this.
I do it all the time as a zoning hearing board solicitor, and I've done it for you, Michael.
And what for?
We have to...
If you have a question, it's called me. I absolutely take your call and work it out.
I'm sorry, I didn't draft the application, okay?
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
All right, we'll resume the meeting of the Haverford Township zoning hearing board. Ernie?
So the board met briefly in executive session to discuss Mr. Yanoff's position relevant to the notice in the application. At this point, the purpose under the statute for the notice is to provide a reasonable notice to the public as to what the application that will be presented and what the applicant is requesting. Reviewing it, we believe that that intent has been served and that everybody who would want to be a party or have an interest in this matter was notified and present here. So the board would like to have the parties just continue. We understand the argument, but that's where we stand.
Thank you. May I continue?
Yes.
Sir, I assume that you read your attorney's zoning application before you allowed it to be filed, is that correct?
Yes.
And in that application, your attorney indicated that the property had been granted a special exception by the Township zoning hearing board for a gasoline service station. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the application that was filed now speaks to change that designation from a gasoline service station to a vehicle refueling facility. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you agree with me, sir, that under the Township Code, zoning code, those two uses have two separate definitions?
I can't say that.
In the definitional section, sir, I'll suggest to you that gasoline service station is defined as a lot or area of land, together with any structure thereon, used for the retail sale of motor fuel and lubricants, incidental services such as lubrication and hand washing of motor vehicles, and the sale, installation, or minor repair of tires, batteries, or other automobile accessories, and that this use is only permitted in a C4 highway district. Do you have any reason to disagree with me on that? I read that right out of the code.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the vehicle refueling activity, the facility, is defined as a lot or area of land, together with any structures thereon, used for the retail sale of motor vehicle fuel.
Yes.
Are you now asking for a change of use from a service station, a gasoline service station, which is what the special exception was granted for, now as a vehicle refueling activity?
I'm going to object.
For facility.
As Mr. Yanoff had made the argument, this gentleman is not a land development expert, and these are questions... These are actually legal arguments, but better asked to the land development person. Let me finish.
I'm sorry.
And I want to make something very clear here. The applicant has the right to continue to use the gas pumps. If he decided to leave the auto repair business in there, we wouldn't be here. If he decided not to run the auto repair business and just run the fuel pumps, we wouldn't be here. He has the right to continue to use that property, whatever you want to call it. He has the right to sell that gasoline there.
Well, I was with you until you said whatever you want to call it.
What?
Because the code, which is what we live by, the code has two separate definitions for these particular uses. And again, call it hyper-technical, if you will, but I'm making a record here if I need to make that record. If he has a use as a special exception, as a service station facility, which is what the application represented, the use is now being changed to a vehicle refueling facility. It's not the same thing. And I'm pointing this out to the board and asking what it is that the applicant is asking. Continuation of the special exception, or a change of use of a vehicle refueling facility? And I think that that is a critical issue, again, with respect to this application.
I guess it could... Well, let me ask this then. Given the fact that the notice was at least sufficient to provide a reasonable basis of understanding for tonight's hearing, Ms. Kearney, would you like to amend your application?
Since we're going to be coming to a second hearing, yes. I'll amend my application to make it clear that the intent is... I understand the distinction Mr. Yanoff is making. But again, keep in mind, this happened in 1960. I'm not sure that Mr. Yanoff knows what the definition of gasoline service station was in 1960.
Oh, Mr. Basically, Paul?
Yes. So I will make that amendment to make it clear that the intent is to keep those gas pumps there.
All right. Please proceed.
And I actually have one question.
Yes, sir.
In your two definitions, is every vehicle refueling facility also a gasoline service station?
No.
And so how would they be different if you... I understand that one involves services, but there are no services being provided here currently, like vehicle repair services. So just looking at the two definitions, they both involve an element of fuel.
Great, great, great. Okay.
So, and this facility currently is a vehicle fueling facility.
Only by choice.
Only by choice. And so are you saying that as such, it no longer has a special exception?
I'm saying that if they're relying upon the special exception, which they are, because their application says it, if they're relying on the previous grant of special exception relief for a gasoline service station, it's no longer a gasoline service station, so they've abandoned that use. It is now a vehicle refueling facility.
So the idea of your argument is any gasoline service station that no longer provides any incidental services no longer fits that definition, so that you have to have incidental services with fueling?
No. That takes it one step even farther than I want to go.
All right.
Well, I'm only saying that their application is based upon the special exception for a particular use. Their application today changes that use, because the code changes that use. The correct application would have been that... I don't want to suggest what it could be, but I don't know if that's smart enough to figure it out, but...
Oh, but we are going to talk about this, because I am not wasting these people's time anymore.
You're going to get... I'm not wasting time, Ernie. I'm not going to take offense with that.
All right. Well, you're going to deal with the space of the building, size of the building, and whether it's in one definition or the other?
Obviously, she hasn't. That's the whole...
No, but she's about to put her case on.
She did put her case on. But she put her case on through him.
I think we're in the process of doing that right now.
Yeah. We're in the middle of the applicant's case.
Go ahead, Ernie, then.
Okay. I made my point. I just want to move on to, if I may, to the next issue. Okay. Thank you. Can you tell us again what you're selling in the convenience store in the proposed...
Chips, prepackaged goods, sodas, water, oil and other consumables.
Oil and what?
Other consumables for cars and stuff, so like, for example...
Car-related products, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you read the definition of convenience store that your client pointed out to us?
Yes, sir.
Does it include the right to sell oil and automobile-related materials?
Not explicitly.
Does it say it at all explicitly or otherwise?
I don't think there's any objection to it as it is.
I'm sorry, sir?
No, sir.
It does not? Okay.
What was your question again, Michael?
The question is, are you permitted to sell oil and automobile-related materials under the definition of convenience store in the Havertford Township zoning ordinance that you just told us that you were willing to comply with?
If you don't know the answer, it's okay to say you don't.
I don't know.
Okay. But you've reviewed the definition of convenience store, and you told us that you're going to abide by that, right?
Sir, I'm not a lawyer.
I didn't ask you. You said you would abide by the definitions in the code, correct?
Sure, yes.
But then you told us that you're going to sell things that are not permitted by the code. So which is?
Now, he said he doesn't know if it's permitted by the code.
Well, then I'll read it into the record.
Yeah, read the description of convenience store into the record.
A convenience store is defined as a mini-food market designed to attract and serve a large volume of stop-and-go traffic, specializing in fast sales of bread, dairy, and luncheon meats, as well as both made-to-order and ready-to-consume sandwiches, meals, and beverages intended for consumption off the premises, and provided a limited supply of grocery store stock as a convenience to his people. And then it talks about tobacco and rest. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, sir.
What's the date of that definition?
Amended 4/8/24. So would you agree with me, sir, based upon the reading of that definition, that you are not permitted to sell gasoline and automobile-related products in a convenience store in Havertford Township pursuant to this definition?
I'm going to object to that. That's a legal interpretation of that. And my legal interpretation of that is, I buy my windshield wiper at the grocery store.
Sustained.
Do you buy your oil at the grocery store?
Sustained.
Thank you. I'm not sure what sustained means in this situation.
The objection is sustained.
I understood that one. I didn't understand what it meant in terms of the answers to the question.
Well, they're not stricken. She didn't ask for that. It just sustained in that the legal conclusion he drew. He's objecting to the fact that he opined and made a legal conclusion as opposed to just simply providing a factual, correct, Ms. Kearney?
Oh, I'm sorry. What's the penalty?
I said the objection is relevant to the witness drawing a legal conclusion from the question.
Correct.
So is testimony...
Let's not put it in favor of the court. Let's go. Your application in Tab A7 contains a zoning plan. Can you look at that, please?
Yes, sir.
How many cars are able to park on this property now?
Are you counting the cars that are in the filling positions, sir?
Well, let's ask it that way. As part of your parking count, are you counting the cars that are being filled up at the various pumps?
Yes, sir.
And you're suggesting that people who are filling their cars with gasoline can then go into the convenience store to buy something and then come out again and move their cars?
Yes, sir.
And so how many cars can park at the filling station?
At the filling stations, eight vehicles can park.
And what happens if a ninth car comes and wants to fuel it, refuel, and can't get to the pump? Where does that car go?
He stands in queue. They wait in queue.
Where is there a place for fuel on this property?
Depending upon the way the vehicle enters, it can either queue on this... If you're facing the building to the right side, is usually where the cars stand and wait.
How many cars can queue at that location, sir?
I'm not sure, sir.
No, get over there. Okay. And what happens... You indicated that your trucks come anywhere from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Where do they park?
They don't park, sir. They're...
They just drop the packages off and keep going?
They're idling. They're waiting, and they turn off the vehicles, and they're waiting in front of the building to unload and then leave.
How much space is between the end of the fuel pump closest to the building and the building itself?
How much space is between the end of the fuel pump to the building?
To the building.
I believe it's 12 to 13 feet.
12 to 13 feet. How wide is a 40-foot box truck?
Eight to nine feet.
So eight to nine feet of that 12 to 13 feet is being taken up by a truck at any time between 6:00 and 10:00 a.m., correct?
For about 10 minutes, yes, sir.
But suppose somebody wants to come in and buy something at the convenience store and not get gasoline? Where's that person going for it?
Sir, this is not for... We're not having customers stop and come in specifically for the convenience store. We haven't had a customer yet do that.
Because you haven't been hoping.
Even for like any kind of convenience items that are there now in the snack shop.
Are you suggesting that the only customers that you're going to allow to enter the convenience store are those who fill their car up with gasoline? Is that what you're telling us?
No, sir.
Okay, so tell me hypothetically.
Yes, sir.
Eight cars are parked at the pump. A 40-foot box truck is parked within the eight to 10 feet in front of the store. Where is the person who wants to buy a sandwich or a ready-made food going to park?
Again, sir, we don't sell ready-made sandwiches or hoagies or any of those things.
Well, we just looked at the... Suppose they want to buy a bag of potato chips?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where is that person going to park?
Right now, where the parking spots are made on the plant.
Sir, not now. In your application, where is that person going to park?
I think he's pointing out the parking spaces that are being added to the site.
How many parking spaces are being added to the site?
Sir, there's four to the right of the building, and there's two to the left of the building.
And how do they get there if the property is completely blocked up with eight cars at the fueling station and a 40-foot truck?
There's space made between the 40-foot truck and the parking spot, sir.
How much space?
Plenty. I didn't measure it with a ruler, but there's plenty.
Sir, do you sell cannabis-related products in your convenience store now?
Not cannabis-related, no, sir. No THC products.
THC products, right?
Correct. No THC products.
Do you intend to sell the THC products?
No.
No?
And he said no THC products.
Is he saying no THC in the new location?
Correct. That's correct. We do not intend to sell any THC products.
All right. Or you have a bitcoin machine in the new facility?
I believe we have it on the plans shown. Yes, sir.
And that'll stop now on me?
Yes, sir. Unless the township is opposed.
What is the hardship on this particular property that allows you to come and ask for variance today before the zoning hearing?
I think I've made it abundantly clear that no longer are vehicle repair slots very profitable, as witnessed by my tenant leaving and deciding to join us as a manager of the site, that he couldn't turn a profit anymore fixing cars for people or doing oil changes.
So that your hardship is financial danger, right? Can't make a living.
Yes, sir.
Has nothing to do with property, its size, its location, its configuration. It's because you can't make a living financially.
I'm going to object. We have a land development expert who's going to testify. Previously testified as to the three frontages, the impervious on the property and all that as to the physical hardship. I thought he was asking not in the legal sense, but just the hardship generally. If you're asking for the legal hardship sense, I do have a land development expert who will testify.
I'm asking whether or not the hardship that you're presenting as a reason for this application is because you can't make a living at that location without a convenience store there. Isn't that what you testified to in the first hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So your reason is financial.
Yes, in addition to...
Objection noted. I'm going to overpull the objection. I think he can ask him the specific question, understanding that you have a further expert in zoning to testify.
So I'm going to object to the only portion of it.
Noted.
Okay. Do you remember testifying at the hearing on August 17, 2023, on this application?
I do, sir.
Okay. And do you remember being asked...
I thought this is obligation. Are you... You're going to now have... You're going to cross-examine witnesses based on testimony to the August 23...
Under the rules of evidence in Pennsylvania, prior recorded testimony is able to be used to impeach the testimony of a witness. It's not... I'm not asking for you to adopt that testimony, that transcript. I'm merely asking what he previously testified to under oath, and that is permitted. I'll defer to your solicitor, but it's prior recorded testimony.
I would just ask that you submit a particular...
Sure.
Yeah.
Record.
I have copies of the transcript. I don't have enough for everybody, because I didn't want to kill that many trees. But I do have transcript here. And I actually have a copy for the witness to take a look at.
Sure. Thank you.
I direct your attention, sir, to page 10 of the transcript, line 18. The numbers are in the upper right-hand corner, or in the left side of the page.
Got it, sir.
Okay. Question. So why do you need this use variance to allow a convenience store on the property when you have the gas station? Answer. Because the convenience store will allow us to continue operating business when fuel may one day go down, like electric cars are coming in, and we will be able to help us survive and thrive. Is that correctly, sir?
Yes.
Again. On page 12. Starting with line 8. If you are not allowed a convenience store in this property, what do you foresee happening with the property over time? Answer. Down the line when gasoline is no longer a thing for cars and consumers, then we have to shut down and eventually shut our stores. Question. That would be because you wouldn't be making enough money to survive? Answer.
Michael, are you reading the old transcript into the record? Or is there a question here?
I'm asking whether we...
It's 9:30 already, and you have witnesses that you... It's 9:30 already, and you have witnesses that you want to call, and others, other witnesses.
I'm asking whether you recall testifying to those facts.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Is it true, sir, that your car, your, your property has been subject of a Environmental Protection Agency action?
Yeah, I'm going to object. That has nothing to do with zoning.
Where's relevance on it?
Relevance is that he's not taking care of the property. His current state is a service station, as a gasoline service station. And he had, this board, it goes to the health, safety, and welfare issue. He has existing violations. One of the five parts of the, of the variance test is, does it have a deleterious effect on the health, safety, and welfare of the community? If he hasn't, if he hasn't corrected the existing EPA violations, then it's, then his current use...
The question is whether the variance would have an deleterious effect, not whether the current use is, right?
No.
No?
No.
So we're going to, so then any variance in your mind that existing or special use exception that's been granted is all of a sudden subject to health, safety, welfare review of its operation?
That's what they...
No.
We're here to listen to a request for a variance, and the test is whether we grant the variance or not. It has multiple steps, as you point out, one of which is health, safety, welfare. Okay? But that's in connection with granting the variance or not.
And, and let me just add that. And my argument is, as it continues to be, is the gasoline pumps, whether I was here in front of, were here in front of you or not, would continue to remain there. They're permitted to be there. So if we went away and didn't ask for this relief, you, this, it is not the subject that we're talking about. We're adding a convenience store. Not if, if I were adding more gas pumps, I agree. That is a subject that should be discussed, but we're not adding more gas pumps. We're adding retail items to sell.
You're asking for a continuation of the use as a, as a vehicle re-fueling facility, and one of the issues is whether or not its continued use would be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
But, but even if that were the argument to be made, DEP has control over that, those issues. It's not an issue for a zoning hearing board.
Well, the DEP doesn't cause the, the release.
The chairman will sustain, sustain the objection, and the witness doesn't have to answer the question.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. When Mr. Yanoff was asking you about the testimony on pages 10 and 12 of the prior zoning hearing board hearing, you're still in agreement, those are reasons, many reasons that you're asking for the relief, those are still reasons, because the convenience store will allow us to continue operating business when fuel may one day go down, like electric cars are coming in, and will be able to help us survive and thrive. You still agree with that?
Yes.
And on page, I believe you said 12, down the line when gasoline is no longer a thing for cars and consumers, then we have to shut down and eventually shut our stores. You still agree with that statement?
Yes.
And you had indicated, when we were testifying in reference to the size of the box trucks, did you, I just want to make sure, did you mean 40 feet?
30 feet. Apologies.
And did you, how did you verify that?
Are the box trucks that your vehicles are delivering are 26-foot trailers? They're the 26-foot by at most 30-foot trailers. I called one of our vendors, I texted one of our vendors to make sure.
Okay. And I think I did ask you that, but I forgot. Currently today, in the area where you sell, you sell the windshield wiper, the oil, things of that nature?
Correct.
Correct? That's already being sold at the property?
Yes.
Would you agree that in the convenience, you would keep those on that side and the convenience store would not have those items?
No. It would all be together, right?
That's what he testified. They're selling it in the convenience store. You're trying to recreate his testimony.
No, I'm just asking. You would, all right, you would continue to sell those items that are currently being sold there today?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
Frankly, I'm not getting the distinction. I buy windshield washer fluid all the time, and I actually bought gas treatment at the Giant. It's that everything.
Only because your definition doesn't allow it, that's why.
Thank you.
And I disagree that it doesn't allow it. It's, that's...
We'll save legal for... You need time for your next witness, Ms. Kearney?
Sorry, say that again?
You need any time for your next witness?
Uh, yeah, let me just put stuff together and then we'll get ready. We'll, we'll do the traffic engineer, going a little at the border.
Just for purposes of counsel, we have your traffic engineer, Ms. Kearney, and Mr. Yanoff, yours as well, correct?
Correct.
Just time-wise, you, question, do you think we'll be able to get through both of them?
I think we're, we can go. I think we're ready. And it... Dave is coming up.
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
And your full name and the capacity of which you appear?
David Horner, H-O-R-N-E-R.
And what, what's the capacity that you're appearing for?
As a traffic engineer on behalf of the applicant.
Make it easy. I'll stipulate to Mr. Horner's call.
Thank you for your cursing.
Okay. Great. And again, Mr. Horner, PE is, is marked as A6.
Just for the record, just put on exactly what expertise?
As a traffic expert. Are you okay? And Dave, you are a PE, and as indicated on your PTOE, can just briefly explain what those both are?
Yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and I am a certified professional traffic operations engineer, which is a national certification that it's eligible only for PEs, but it is distinguishing as a traffic engineer specifically, as separate from a civil engineer.
And what, what is your relationship to the applicant?
I was retained as a traffic engineer to prepare a traffic study and speak on behalf of this application.
And are you familiar with the Haverford Township zoning code?
I am.
And are you familiar with the property and the existing use on the property?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the applicant's proposed use of the property?
Yes.
And can you please describe the applicant's property as to location?
Yes, so it's, it's on the, what I would call the northwest corner of Haverford Road and Buck Lane. It currently has accesses both to Haverford Road and Buck Lane, and it's a gas station, as I would term it, not a legal term, but a gas station that provides, as, as we heard the testimony, 10 fueling positions, eight of which could be active at one time.
And the, as indicated earlier, the zoning district is C2 neighborhood commercial?
Yes, as I understand it, yes.
And can you just describe the configuration as to the driveway accesses?
Well, there's two driveways on Haverford Road. One is on, say, the northern end of the property, and one is closer to the signalized intersection with Buck Lane. And there's a driveway that intersects Buck Lane just, I'll say, west of the intersection.
And it's your understanding there's no changes to the gas pumps?
That's my understanding, correct.
Or to the existing layout as to the building that exists on the property?
That's my understanding.
And you prepared the August 12, 2024, traffic impact assessment that we've marked as Exhibit A10?
I did.
And what was the purpose of the traffic impact assessment?
Well, the purpose was to identify whether there would be any traffic impact for the convenience store use on this property for the benefit of the board to consider, and they're considering this application.
And can you describe how you prepared the assessment report?
Yes. So what we did first was we, we look at the existing conditions, and when we say we look at them, we're, we go out to the site and we do a field review. We also do traffic counts, and we did traffic counts at the signalized intersection of Haverford Road, Buck Lane. We also did traffic counts at the existing three driveways serving the site. We did those in a weekday morning peak hour from 7:00 to 9:00 AM, which is generally the commuter peak period, busiest traffic time in the morning on the roads. We also did the weekday afternoon, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, also commuter peak period when people are coming home from work. And then we looked at a Saturday period from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, because that is, you know, considered to be a peak for a convenience store use as well as the weekday is, so we wanted to add that into our study to make sure we were covering the busiest times. So we documented the existing conditions in the report. That included doing an analysis of the capacity of the signalized intersection and the unsignalized driveways. Now, in traffic engineering lingo, level of service is the measure of how an intersection operates, and it's a grading system of which level of service A, B, C, and D are considered to be an acceptable condition. Level of service E, borderline, and level of service F, not acceptable. So we apply that grading system, and that's based on the delay the vehicles experience in the various movements at the intersections. So we applied that to the existing conditions. This is before the convenience store, just to set a baseline of what's happening now. And what we found is that at the signalized intersection, we found level of service A, B, and C, depending on the movement, which suggests that the intersection currently operates appropriately, efficiently, and no level of service E or F conditions, which would be considered to be not appropriate. The driveways are operating at A, B, C, or D, also appropriate, also acceptable conditions. And when I say acceptable, I'm referring to not just the traffic engineering community, but PENDOT, the township, all the entities that have a stake in the roadways. That is the measuring system. An acceptable condition is level of service A, B, C, or D. So that's what we found in the current condition. So then what we do is we project the amount of traffic that the convenience market would add to the property, and then reassess to see whether that would create any issues in terms of the operations. So in order to do that, there's a publication called the Institute of Transportation Engineers. The board may be familiar. I don't know if the public is. It's, it's Institute of Transportation Engineers publication Trip Generation Manual. It's in its 11th edition. It's been issued for the last 40 years. It is the accepted publication for trip generation characteristics for a variety of land uses, including convenience markets, including gas stations, including any land use you can imagine. So we use that in order to project the traffic for a site that doesn't currently exist. When I say it doesn't exist, I'm referring to the convenience market. So we applied the statistics from that manual, which is what PENDOT or the township would require us to do. We can't really stray from that. We have to use that. So in this case, there's a couple of subcategories in order to define this convenience market and gas station combination of two uses on the site. The one that we thought was the most representative was applying a gas station with 10 fueling positions and a convenience market of between 2,000 and 4,000 square feet. Now, understanding the convenience market's proposed to be 1,300 square feet. There is no category in the IT that breaks it down to that small of a square foot. So we used the best available data, and we applied that. We basically counted the existing gas station and then added what would be the difference if we applied the IT to the convenience market and the fueling positions. Now, I will say, it's a very conservatively high analysis. Reason being is, as you heard Robbie testify, even though there's 10 fueling positions, there's really only eight that could be in use at one time. So perhaps we could have used eight fueling positions, and our numbers would be a little bit less than what we show. We also have a convenience market that's quite a bit smaller than the range in the IT. But we decided to use the worst case because we wanted to make sure that we would be able to show how this operates without a question. We weren't going to try to use some reduced factor to account for those items. So bottom line is, when we added that traffic on, and we added it on basically following the existing patterns that are experienced at the driveways now, and what we found is the signalized intersection level of service doesn't change. It's still an A, B, or C. Is there some delay increase slightly because there's more traffic? Yes. But it doesn't change level of service, still acceptable. The driveways also don't change. They remain A, B, C, or D. Again, a little bit more delay perhaps when there's more traffic. When I say delay, coming out of the driveway, for example, but it's still an acceptable operating condition. So when we see that result, our finding is that adding the convenience market, even in the most conservative of environments, the level of service, the operation, the capacity is there to handle that traffic. And that was the conclusion of our study.
Yep. Just wanted to ask you a few things.
Yes.
And so in your conclusions in the report, you indicate the signalized intersection of Haverford Road, Buck Lane, and accommodate the additional traffic to be generated by the proposed modifications with acceptable level of service similar to the existing conditions?
It can, yes.
And the site access driveways will continue to operate at acceptable LLS for all ingress and egress movements during all three peak periods, correct?
Correct.
And that the proposed modification will have a minimal impact on the traffic operations in the area?
Correct.
Now, one of the questions I did want to ask, this, the, when you did the traffic counts, how, how did you do that?
We did it. We have a, basically a person is out there during those periods of time documenting all the movements. When I say the movement, for example, at the traffic signal, someone coming on Buck Lane could make a left, a straight, or a right on both approaches, same thing on Haverford Road. So that's 12 movements, and we document all of those. And, and the same thing for the driveways. There's less movements, but anybody making a left or a right, in or out, we document that as well.
And what, one of the questions I did want to ask, at the time you did those, I believe it was summer, correct?
It was. It was late June, yes.
Late June. So most, most schools were out.
Correct.
Would that change the report if you had done it during school periods?
Not materially, no.
And, and can you explain why?
Yeah, because we, we look at factors of month to month and how it affects traffic flow. And actually, in June and July, it tends to be about the same, if not a little bit higher than some of the school months. There's other months during school that are higher. Given the level of operation we found, even a marginal few percent either way of our volumes won't change the result.
And one, one of the questions that had been asked of Robbie was in reference to queuing. And can you address queuing and congestion at the site?
Yes. So the level of service, as I indicated, is acceptable. That means there's capacity there. However, we did observe... However, we did observe that at times there is congestion as any corner, gas station, convenience store site, and there's thousands in Pennsylvania. When you have accesses that are in close proximity to a traffic signal, there's times where you have some queuing of vehicles at the traffic signal that could impede the flow in and out, and it's just a matter of waiting for that to clear, and it does clear, and then the vehicles can proceed. So in terms of congestion, yes, there are times where there's congestion, more of a peak hour consideration, but there is, yes.
And some of the questions, I apologize, I can't remember if it was the last or the prior one, was in reference to walkability. Did you look at that?
I did, yes.
Could you just briefly describe what your research showed?
Well, I can't.
So I can only ask questions that related to the report? Okay.
Within the four corners of it, yeah. I mean, that's what he prepared it for, and going outside the scope.
Would be?
I think inappropriate.
I'm sorry, inappropriate? Inappropriate, okay. And Dave, in your professional opinion, based on your report, is the property suitable for the proposed use with respect to whether the use would materially increase traffic congestion on the local streets?
Objection. If the opinion that's being sought relates only to traffic, then I would agree with that. But the question is, is the use appropriate? And that question is well beyond the scope of this expertise and opinion.
You refuse a question?
I'm sorry, my question was, is the property suitable for the proposed use with respect to whether the use would materially increase traffic congestion, related to traffic congestion?
That's not the correct question.
It's her question, though, so. I don't ask it. We gotta keep moving.
Our objections are ruled. Wait until you answer the question.
If you could repeat it, I'm sorry.
Is the property suitable for the proposed use with respect to whether the use would materially increase traffic congestion?
It is suitable in that respect, and it would not, in my opinion, materially increase traffic congestion.
In your opinion, is there adequate access arrangements in order to protect streets from undue congestion and hazard?
Objection, beyond the scope of the report. Outside of the four corners of the report. He did a traffic analysis intersectional only, didn't talk about access to the site.
Repeat the question.
I think I did ask him in the beginning about access to the site.
You didn't. I would have objected then.
Hold on.
Can you repeat the question?
Is there adequate access arrangements in order to protect streets from undue congestion and hazard?
Objection is beyond the scope of the report.
I apologize. Obviously, we didn't have the report beforehand.
He did actually provide all the exhibits beforehand, but I don't know if they get distributed yet.
This is, yeah. Doesn't that the exhibit show?
It does look like there are counts in the exhibit dealing with access points. I'm assuming there are addendums and exhibits attached to the report.
Yeah, could I go back? Okay. As part of your report, did you look at the accesses to the property?
Yes.
And can you describe for the board what you determined from reviewing those?
Yes. In the existing conditions, the accesses operate at acceptable level of service A, B, C, or D, and that will be, that will remain as such in the future condition with the convenience store. That was our conclusion in the report.
Okay. And I apologize. I did want to ask another question, and I would mark this as A15 Pennsylvania Crash Information Tool. Dave, separate from the traffic report that you had done, had you looked at other information available to you?
Yes.
And what is it that I have marked as A15? And I apologize, I didn't give you one.
It's a summary of five-year from 2019 through 2023 crash data at the intersection or at the driveways to the site.
And what, where did you obtain this information?
From PennDOT's database.
And that, at the top, it indicates, top left, it indicates Pennsylvania Department of Transportation?
Yes.
And at the bottom left, it indicates September 24th, 2024. Is that when you obtained the information?
Yes.
And can you describe for the board what these two pages demonstrate or show?
Objection for the record. Hearsay document?
Is this, may I ask follow-up questions?
Sure.
Is this a document that's publicly available?
It's a document that our firm obtained from PennDOT. It's publicly available if you identify, if you have access to the crash information tool, I guess I'll say. So I don't know that it's available to the public per se, unless they have access to that.
But that makes it more hearsay because you have to input information. Somebody else has input information to get this property, to get this document. This is hearsay.
Is this, may I follow up?
Yes.
Is this a document that traffic engineers normally obtain as part of their livelihoods?
Objection, relatives. Doesn't matter whether they do the question.
Well, let's see where she goes with it first, Michael.
I'm sorry.
Let's see where she goes with it first. I think she's trying to get to the, unless you want to make a straight-up argument that it's not hearsay. Answer her questions.
Yes.
Okay, and would you normally obtain it the way, would you normally obtain this information in the way you obtained it for this evening's hearing?
Yes.
And is this data available to other traffic engineers?
Yes.
Is it something that you've relied on in the past?
Yes.
And can you explain when?
Objection, relatives.
I think the.
Let's handle the first objection, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I mean, we'll let it in, and we'll give it the weight that we think it should be afforded.
And then what was the second question? Repeat that question with the second objection. What was your most recent question, please?
Wait, are you asking me or Michael?
Yes, you.
What was my question?
What was the last question?
Don't remember. Can you describe, oh, what was, when do you use this information that you obtained? That's when you crashed that information.
And you have an objection to that question?
In light of the chair's ruling.
Okay, all right, fair enough, okay. So withdraw that objection.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
What do you use that information for?
Well, at times, in preparation of traffic studies or in testifying at hearings, it's valuable to look at accident crash data, so that's when we would use it.
And can you describe for the board what the information that you obtained indicates?
Objection, hearsay.
What does, what does he use it for?
Now he says, what does it say? Actually, now he asks, what does it say?
Do you have a specific question regarding a particular portion of the document?
Okay. On the second page of the document, what, where was the information? What's the location of the information that you obtained, the streets or the intersections?
The Haverford Road frontage of the subject site and the Haverford Road intersection with Buck Lane.
Okay, and the information indicates for 2019, 2020, '21, '22, and '23 crashes?
Yes.
And then it gives you the total number for each year?
Yes.
And it also gives you crash description by year?
Yes.
And person injury summary by year?
Yes.
And? Do we hold off?
No, you can go.
Oh, okay. And based on your review of this information, what did you determine as a traffic engineer?
Objection, hearsay.
This shows that over the course of those five years, there was a total of 10 crashes at the signalized intersection, averaged about two per year. That is, while any crash is not desirable, that is a relatively low number of crashes and does not suggest a particular bad crash history, I'll say. And no, no crashes were identified at the site accesses to Haverford Road.
That's all the questions I have.
Sir, you did not, your report does not encompass the internal circulation of the property.
It did not.
Also, so as I understand it, the only analysis you did were surrounding intersections. Is that correct?
The accesses and the intersection of Buck Lane and Haverford Road, which is the adjacent signal.
And did you manage to check the Haverford Township Police Department to see the accident history that might have been reported to the township police department?
I did not.
If I suggested, sir, that this pile of documents, which I did not copy because of its threat, are all the accidents that occurred at the intersection, at the area of the intersection of Buck Lane, Haverford Road, and West Avenue for the period 2014 to 2024, including the 600 and 700 blocks of Haverford Road and the 300 and 700 blocks of Buck Lane, West Avenue. Do you have any reason to disagree with me?
I don't know. I don't know where those blocks are, and I don't know what's in that stack.
You never, you never looked at all the accident reports from Haverford Township Police Department?
I did not.
I have no further questions.
As part of the PennDOT information, how do they get that? How does PennDOT get the information?
That's clearly hearsay.
In your understanding, how is?
That's clearly hearsay. His understanding doesn't matter.
He's a traffic engineer. They do this for a living.
So what, you're a lawyer. I could ask you all kinds of questions about how a lawyer gets information. It could still be hearsay. You're asking how somebody else does a job getting information and inputting.
Let me ask you this.
I'm not necessarily sure it's hearsay, but I'm not sure how he answers the question without personal knowledge of it.
Yeah. Are you aware of how information is obtained for these reports?
Yes.
And can you explain how you're aware of that?
I'm aware of it because I have personally asked the question to the PennDOT representative.
That's hearsay.
Sustained.
All right, no further questions.
Thank you. I have nothing.
So I think what we were going to do, is this correct? We're going to pause the applicant's case in chief to allow for some efficiency here, to allow Counselor Yanov to call a witness on behalf of the protestants.
That is correct, thank you.
And it's going to just be one witness who's a traffic engineer.
That is correct.
And and then we'll resume, if time permits, the applicant's case in chief. Okay. Colonel Yanov, your witness?
Yes, I'd like to call Frank Tavani, T-A-V-A-N-I.
Frank, thank you. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
Yes, I do.
All right, and for the record, your full name and the business that you're here and the role in which you're testifying?
Certainly. Full name is Frank Tavani, T-A-V-A-N-I. I'm here as I was retained by a group of neighbors to review the applicant's traffic study and give opinions on it.
Mr. Tavani, can you tell us what your, may I proceed?
Yeah, well, he's testifying as a traffic expert.
No, I just had a few questions that I could follow up with.
On whether he's qualified to testify as an expert or what, you're going to cross-examine and just?
Yeah. I agree.
I'd just like to have Mr. Tavani's curriculum vitae on the floor.
Okay.
If I ask all the questions that are contained within the curriculum vitae, would your answer be the same?
Yes.
And that is a most current curriculum, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tavani, you indicated that you were charged with the task, with the responsibility of reviewing the traffic impact of proposed use on this particular, on this particular property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us how you did that, sir?
Certainly. What we're looking at on the screen right now is an exhibit, which I did not mark because I don't know the exhibit number, but it's being passed out to the board members. I also shared two copies with the applicant, and it's on the screen for the public to see. And everything we're about to see in this little presentation is taken directly from applicant exhibits. It's nothing that I prepared. I prepared no report. I just basically am focusing on certain elements that I think are worthy of board's consideration. So what you see on the first page is just the first page of the applicant's traffic study, as we just heard from the last witness. The next page of the exhibit is page three of that exhibit. And I just wanted to focus for a moment on the trip generation, which we heard from Mr. Horner. I did not attempt to replicate or, you know, verify any of the veracity of these numbers. I'll take that on faith. But I call the board's attention to the center of this page, Table 1, the first row that's listed existing gas station. I believe that is the existing trip generation activity at the site driveways, simply added up into total inbound and total outbound. So you can see, for example, during the AM peak hour presently, albeit in summer months, which we'll get to in a moment, the AM peak hour was a total of 79 trips. And then by the applicant's engineer's own opinion, that traffic is basically going to more than double during that peak hour. The addition of the convenience store results in additional site trips, as you can see in Table 1, equalling 82. So it's more than double the existing during the AM peak hour. If you continue to the right in this table, the numbers also go up, although not as dramatically. But it's important to point out that this is a fairly noticeable and meaningful increase in activity. The next page of the exhibit is Figure 1 from the applicant's traffic study. I apologize, these numbers are a little small. I did not prepare the exhibit, but with the handouts and the relatively large screen, you can see, for example, that the driveway along Buck Lane, which is shown, if you see the word "site," which is in the lips, and you look underneath that, you'll see a line intending to represent the driveway for the site on Buck Lane. And if you turn your head sideways, you'll see the outbound left turn movement, for example, is 17. So during existing AM peak hour conditions, there's 17 vehicles making that left turn and heading toward the signalized intersection of Buck Lane and Haverford. The next page of the exhibit, I took the figures out of order. This is now Figure 6 from. This is now Figure 6 from the report. This is the future build condition. You see that 17 goes to 36, so it essentially doubles. And the next several pages are just a replication of that process. During the PM peak existing, it's 27, becomes something in the high 30s, and then I think it says 31 during the Saturday peak hour, and it becomes 47. Now, none of these figures have anything on it that says anything about scale. It doesn't even attempt to correlate the, the real distance in, in real space. But if, for example, you look at the relative distances between the driveways along Haverford to one another and to Buck Lane, and then compare that, for example, to the relative distance of Haverford to the driveway on Buck, you see they're all relatively equal. And in fact, the distance, as this figure depicts, suggests the distance between that driveway and Haverford is actually greater than the distance between the driveway and West Avenue, which is a very sleepy street. As you can see here, there was no activity at all in either direction. So the question is, what is it like in real life, for those who are not familiar with the site? And this is from Google Maps. This is what it actually does look like on Buck Lane and West Avenue. That driveway that we're just talking about, where there's 30 or 40 vehicles per hour making a left turn out, just coincidentally happens to be that silver car that we see at the driveway attempting to leave. And you can see that if that car just basically goes straight and doesn't even attempt to start turning left to align itself into Buck Lane, it's going to drive right into the stop bar on the eastbound approach of Buck Lane at the traffic signal. So basically, that vehicle either has to swing out very wide and then cut the wheel all the way to the left to even have a hope of aligning itself into Buck Lane at the stop bar. But more often than not, it's possible those vehicles, upon leaving, will effectively block any oncoming traffic from, from anywhere on the right side of the screen, heading west into Buck Lane, and could result in an angle accident, for example. So any potential increase of driveway activity for that driveway in particular is something particularly alarming that I would be very focused on were I a board member. And apparently, I'm not alone, because PennDOT also seems like they're focusing some attention on Haverford Road collectively, and in particular, this intersection. This is a screen grab of a public meeting presentation done by Panoni, a vendor for PennDOT.
I'm going to object. Unless Panoni's here to discuss this, I'm going to object to any of this.
We haven't gotten to what the, what the testimony is yet. You don't know. All you've seen is the face.
Well, let, let's see where it goes, just as we did with you, Bernard, but feel free to interpose any objections you feel are appropriate.
And I guess before that, I don't think you marked this as an exhibit yet, have you?
I did not. I didn't know the exhibit number.
Yeah.
Michael.
As P5.
P5.
And that includes the, the PennDOT report that you're using, or?
Yeah, P5 is a collection of a dozen or so pages that you have in front of you. I believe this presentation was actually made to the township as well by PennDOT.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to object to this. It's over a year old. I have no idea whether the township's still doing this project, whether it's been done and everything's good. I, I, I'm going to object to this unless Mr. Tavani was the presenter. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate.
It doesn't necessarily matter whether it's a year old.
That wasn't, that wasn't audience.
Yes.
Hold on one second.
You have any, you're going to ask him any foundation?
I'm going to, I'm just telling them, I was just going to tell him I'm going to ask him foundation questions.
Let's see where it goes first, but objections noted at this point.
Mr. Tavani, did you utilize this report? Do you utilize reports of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation that are made to various municipalities with regard to public safety and corridor information as part of your job as a traffic engineer?
I do, especially if a particular project or endeavor happens to be in the immediate study area of a site that I'm either reviewing or presenting.
And, 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 I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished. And did you utilize the information contained within this Haverford Road corridor safety improvement project public meeting material as part of formulation of the opinions that you intend to provide today?
The, the majority of my opinion is based on the applicant's traffic study, but I do believe that this is something that is an important element that the board should at least have an understanding and an awareness of.
Frank, you didn't answer his question, so why don't you ask your question again, Michael?
I'm sorry?
I said, Michael, why don't you ask your question again? I don't think he answered.
Can you read the question back?
It was, did you use?
Do you use, do you use?
Wait, wait, wait. Go ahead, I'm.
Can you read?
Please read it, yeah.
Question, and did you utilize the information contained within this Haverford Road corridor safety improvement project public meeting material as part of the formulation of the opinions that you would provide today?
He said as part of, not the primary or secondary. So did you use it? Just a yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
And do you normally use information such as contained within the Haverford Road corridor safety improvement project in the course of preparation, analysis, traffic impact at various locations in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yes.
And did you in fact utilize the information contained within this document in assisting you in formulation of your opinion here today?
Yes.
And my objection stands again. Mr. Tavani, you're not part of Panoni Associates, are you?
No, although I did speak with a Panoni representative.
Yeah, that, well, that's hearsay.
Wait, you objected?
I'm sorry?
Objection.
Yes. Okay.
Sustain with respect to what?
Sustain with respect to the fact that any testimony relevant to or with regard to the Haverford Safety Improvement Project.
If, if I could just make an argument with respect to that. It is normal and common in Pennsylvania for experts to apply other documents in the formulation of their opinions. It's a normal procedure. Physicians are able to rely on the reports of other physicians in the course of rendering their opinion. That's, this is no different than that. He obtained information. He's not necessarily rendering and providing you with the opinions stated in the Haverford Corridor Safety Improvement Project. He's merely providing you with the facts that are contained therein.
How is this any, how is this any different than the objection that you made to the applicant's presentation of their traffic study backed up by PennDOT information also?
It's different because that was, that was used as an opinion. That, that the information.
Well, the question was rephrased, I believe, and you still objected to it as to how does she rely on that information informing the other opinion? And Mr. Trani, I think, is also relying also on some PennDOT information.
And if I remember correctly, the word overruled my objection. Overruled, which means that he was permitted to testify with respect to that.
Probative weight. I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm understanding whether you see a distinction here.
Well, I do. I do see a distinction there. But the bottom line is, he was permitted to give the opinions that were contained within that, the PennDOT information. I'm not asking his opinion, the opinions that are contained. He's talking about the information that's provided. A major.
Well, I didn't ask, let's get some, I just want to make, I didn't ask his opinion. I asked him about the number of traffic.
I think the chairman, given the less stringent application of rules of evidence in this court, I think the board will allow it and give it the way it is deemed appropriate. The only question I have, Mr. Yanov, is you asked the witness whether he utilizes the Haverford Road corridor safety improvement project.
Information.
Correct. Throughout the Commonwealth.
Well, let.
Why would it be relevant to anything other than Haverford?
I misspoke in the question. Okay. I didn't mean to extend it to the entire Commonwealth. I meant only with respect.
Only for Haverford.
And just my basis for the continuing objection is, this indicates it was a public meeting. Mr. Tavani, did you attend this public meeting?
No.
And it's indicating, I'm assuming this was a presentation made. This is not the actual safety improvement project.
If I could continue with my direct, I think I could enlighten and answer all these questions in due time.
Yeah, the objection is noted. We'll allow it and give it the way it is appropriate.
At this point, but feel free to interpose with objections, both of you, as we go.
It is only 10:15. So as counsel for the applicant pointed out, this is dated January 2023. It's, it's actually quite a recent document because, as the board is perhaps aware, sometimes these projects move at a relatively slow pace that covers years and certainly not months. So it's my understanding that this project has not moved forward as of yet, but there, there are things that PennDOT is looking at, which I think are helpful to understand. So I'll just quickly go through this. This is another slide from that public meeting where PennDOT's consultant, you know, gives the opinion that this is a, a corridor that, as you can see, has a high percentage of angle and rear-end crashes. I mentioned how I believe the driveway on Buck Lane and its proximity to Haverford invites angle accidents, and you can see that this is already a concern of PennDOT's as well.
Wait, wait, right. So this is in your report, Exhibit P5?
Yep.
What, what page? I think he's here.
So it would be, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The cover sheet is page 10, physical page 10, and then the sheet we're looking at on the screen is page 11.
So. It starts here.
Yep, page 10.
And that's, that's labeled page 1, right? And then it goes to page 5. Is that, is that page 5 that we're looking at?
Correct. Page 5 of the slideshow. Much like how I only took pieces of the applicant's traffic study just to focus on particular elements, I did the same thing with the PennDOT study. And just in the interest of brevity, I could have made this 40 or 50 pages.
What do you mean? You did the same thing, Frank? You, you just took certain pages? And included it in your report? So this doesn't have the entire Haverford corridor traffic, whatever the heck it's called?
Yes, as the name implies, this is a corridor study, so Buck Lane happens to be part of the study, but there are many other intersections along the corridor that are also included that have no relevance to this particular application. So in the interest of brevity, I just didn't focus on those.
Frank, can I ask you one question?
It's the page that has the number 5 at the bottom, right? That you had up there that you were talking about.
Right. Those are the page numbers of that slideshow, not of the exhibit that was distributed tonight.
Okay.
And Frank, can I just ask you one question, just so we understand the scope of this? This is a corridor study, of which the subject applicant's property is a portion, and the area for which the traffic study submitted by the applicant was a portion. And on the page that you had up there, you showed purpose and need, but the need is for the entire corridor, I guess, right? But, you know, that's a bigger sample than what we're dealing with in this case. I'm trying, I'm struggling to figure out how do we apply this to this intersection in this applicant's property?
I will, if you will indulge me, four minutes, those questions and more will be amplified.
Okay, four minutes?
Four minutes. I'm looking at the clock. I got 10:21. When that hits 5, I'm going to be done. So this is page.
You know it's wrong, no? I'm not rushing.
I know. I'm just sleepy, so. So page 14 of the PennDOT slideshow shows the Buck Lane intersection. You can see a red circle that says 16 crashes. This was based on Panoni's analysis. It's not actually all that materially different from A15. Probably includes different years than what A15 includes. But nevertheless, it's been identified as a high-crash location, and you can see the, the rusty roof is the canopy over the vehicle fueling positions of the site in question. And the reason why this is helpful information is because this is the potential proposed realignment of Haverford Road along the entire corridor, including along the frontage of this site. Today, it's a four-lane cross-section. There's two through lanes per direction. This is a classic road diet situation that's being considered, where that will be converted to a three-lane cross-section with shoulders if this is approved and funded. So that means that all the traffic that's going in either direction on Haverford and enjoying two through lanes today will now be in one lane. And as you might imagine, that means the delays will also increase. So, and delays are relative to queues. This is another page from that presentation where you can see in green is the existing queue length for the AM peak hour and PM peak hour, and the orange-ish color is the proposed or projected queue if it goes from a four-lane to a three-lane cross-section.
Who's, who's, these are PennDOT's or Panoni's?
Well, Panoni is a consultant who works for PennDOT. They have an open-end agreement.
Right. But.
So this is a blow-up of the AM peak hour, for example. The existing queue today, shown in green, extends the entire length of the frontage of the site on Haverford. And if you look on Buck, you'll see that it goes well beyond not only the driveway, but also West Avenue, and practically gets to the apex of the railroad crossing on Buck Lane. And in the future, with the reduced number of through lanes, the queues will get even longer, which means the frequency that the driveways will be blocked will increase. This all portends to increased difficulty getting in and out of the site, and if you double the traffic during the AM peak hour, for example, that's going to make a, a difficult situation worse. So I'm almost done. These are site plans gathered from the applicant. This is the existing condition. I want to call your attention to where the red arrows, which I placed, are pointing. This is the future condition. So you can see, as we heard from an earlier witness, they are proposing six delineated parking spaces, two closest to Buck Lane, three on the other side of the building, and then one basically directly in front of an existing vacuum and air pump near the, the gas sign on Haverford Road. And just in case you would like to see some pictures of, of the site, this is from Google Maps, Street View. You see the upper-left corner, November 2017. You can see the queue blocking the driveways. You can see someone in a silver car getting either air or using the vacuum at the vacuum pump, which is exactly where a parking space is proposed to go. So there'll be no way to really use that vacuum pump if that parking space is provided. And then you can also see a lot of cars parked in the back, starting with a box truck that has some green and gray, and then double-stacked cars. The point being, these three delineated parking spaces are already being used as parking spaces. We're not adding parking, it's just delineating parking. The parking already exists. This is the same view in the throes of COVID in November 2020. You still see a lot of cars stacked there. Not as many cars on, on Haverford, though. And then in 2021, this gives you a sense of the circulation within the site and how it's a relatively shallow site, and any increase in activity, whether it's related to the convenience store or any other change or addition to the property, is only going to increase the potential conflicts and overall activity that currently exists. With regard to that parking, it's my understanding, from just reading the agenda tonight, that the code requires seven parking spaces, and the applicant is proposing six. Again, I would offer it's more like five, because one of the parking spaces is really in the vacuum and air pump area, but it's less. Might be interesting to see what ITE has to say about this. This is from an ITE online widget for the parking generation manual. We heard from the last witness that the trip generation manual is a go-to resource for trip generation. This is a go-to resource for predicting peak parking needs. I used the same land use code 945 as the applicant's traffic engineer. I put in the 1.3 thousand square feet for the convenience store building that's in the lower-left corner. And then I'll spare you the details, but if you look in the bottom-right corner, you get two predictions, either 11 parking spaces or 14 parking spaces. So depending on how conservative you want to be, this is what ITE says is the normal expected peak parking demand.
And that, and that would be for a gas station with 10 pumps and a convenience store of 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, if I remember the testimony?
So that testimony was a, a little loose. What, what, what the witness was saying was. What, what, what the witness was saying was, in the Trip Generation Manual, the data is sort of segregated into convenience store buildings that, at the smallest, are in a bandwidth of 2,000 to 4,000 square feet. And what his opinion was, since this building is smaller than that, that the way that data was aggregated could result in a conservative estimate. I'm not sure I agree with that, but, you know, it's, it's irrelevant. That was in the Trip Generation Manual. In the Parking Generation Manual, if you look on the left side, you'll see there's no reference at all to vehicle fueling positions. The only variable is thousands of square feet of the convenience store in the convenience store slash gas station. So, I don't know why it's different, but it is. And all I know is, you're saying you need seven, ITE's saying you'd probably need 14, maybe 11, and you really have like five. And they all, and by the way, those five already exist.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The ITE category is convenience store/gas station?
Yes, this is the same land use code used by the applicant's traffic engineer.
And the variable is the square footage of the convenience store? So, if that variable was zero, what would the parking requirement be?
I guess it would be zero. I didn't do that, but...
So, you testify that you know it would be zero? So, then a gas station would require no parking? Is that your testimony?
According to this tool, you could see where the two zeros in the lower-left corner of that data plot intercept one another. I, I don't know that anybody would ever put in a, a variable of zero in this particular land use code or any land use code, because this... If you look where it says "land use 945 convenience store/gas station", if you were to put in zero for the size of the convenience store, then you're in the wrong category, because you don't have a convenience store and gas station. You apparently just have gas station. So, you would go to a different land use code and park generate for that.
So, you don't think that this land use code accounts for the fact that a gas station actually has parking at the pumps? In the 11 spots that it's requiring?
Well, I did not prepare this database or this resource, but I would speculate that at a gas station, the parking demand is probably quite low, because as we heard from the operator, people just pull up, get gas, and leave. So, they're not really parking. They're just dwelling at a vehicle fueling position and then leaving.
So, you are also speculating that a 1,000-square-foot convenience store would require 11 parking spaces, which seems extraordinarily high?
1.3 thousand. If you want to be really technical, on the right side, about in the middle, you see it says "average rate 8.21". That is multiplied by 1.3 to get the 11. So, if you had exactly 1,000 square feet, it would suggest you need eight parking spaces. And as to whether or not that's a lot or a little, I've been to Wawa's, for example, as a convenience store that are relatively small, and boy, those parking spaces are active, and they turn over within minutes.
We got to be careful about that, right? Because I think we've heard the testimony, this is not going to be a Wawa or a mini-Wawa. They're not going to be having prepared foods or anything like that. So, but I, I am interested, though, you, you were here for the earlier testimony tonight, right?
Yes.
So, when the applicant said that the majority of the people who would use the convenience store are likely to be pulling up to the pumps anyway, in your professional opinion, then, should the pump area where at least eight cars could be pumping at the same time and other cars queuing behind them on either side, they come in from both sides, queuing in all sorts of different ways? But all those cars, in addition to the five or six delineated spots, do you think that that aggregate is, would, or that this report would suggest that that's not enough?
So, I understand your question exactly. It's, it's a very good question. I'm going to do the best I can to answer it. And again, I'm giving the disclosure that I did not prepare this manual or this database. My understanding of how...
It's in your, it's in your report, though, Frank. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding of how ITE gathers and uses this information, each one of those Xs represents a study that somebody submitted to ITE and said, "Look, we went to one of these sites, and we observed, observed the parking demand over the course of a day. The busiest time of day, the most parking we observed was five, and the building was 2,000 square feet." Boom. That they look at the study, they see whether or not they think it was done correctly. They include it as a data point in their scatter plot. So, I have to assume that that study counted the number of parking spaces at that particular site. Not the number of cars dwelling at the vehicle fueling position, but the number of parked cars.
But that's just, you're just guessing now.
But any traffic engineer worth their, would give you that same answer. As to what the applicant said, the, the operator said about how, in some cases, a patron of the convenience store might, upon getting their gas, run into the store, get something quickly, and come back out? I mean, not everyone's necessarily going to do that, because for one thing, you might go in there not knowing exactly what you're going to get, how long you're going to be in there, and maybe you have a sense of courtesy to your fellow man, that you don't want to just leave your car unattended at a vehicle fueling position while it's not being fueled. You actually will move and park. I've done that before at gas stations that have convenience stores. You get gas, you think, okay, maybe I do want to get a sandwich, or maybe I just want to, I don't want to go home and see the kids yet. I'm just going to go park, and I'm going to go in, get something, and I'm going to leave. So, some patrons may do that, others probably won't. And I believe this data is presenting the opinion of ITE about the number of parking spaces, not vehicle fueling position dwelling spaces, but rather parking spaces.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
And then, yeah. So, we have these data points that are examples, real-life examples of, of convenience stores and parking.
Exactly.
And on the horizontal axis, we have square footage. And the, the smallest square footage data point is 3,000 square feet, roughly.
Yes.
So, we don't have any data points that are even below 2,000 square feet.
Yes.
So, do you normally extrapolate? So, when they snap that line there and show a, a relationship between parking and square footage, did you not draw that line down until you get to 1,300, and then see where you, where that line would take you? Is that what, you're saying that 14 parking spots would get you there? Because it looks like it would be more like 10, maybe?
Because what you're looking at on the screen is the average, the weighted average, the 50th percentile, because for whatever reason, that's what traffic engineers most often cite. And all I did was put in the data. The computer plots the X and the Y.
But it does, it didn't extrapolate, and you don't then, and you're, and, and when you're do- as a professional traffic engineer, you don't then extrapolate the ITE numbers to bring it closer to our factual situation?
No, I mean, the computer does that for you. But, but I, again, I understand exactly what you're saying. And just very quickly, if you have enough data points, you get not only a linear equation, which is represented by that dash line, but you get a nonlinear curve fit. So, this is actually a fairly robust database by looking at the scatter plots, but it's not like General Office, which has hundreds of data points and is really robust. But I would, I would wager a bet with you that if you recall Mr. Horner, he would tell you that what you typically do is you go to this manual, and you hope that what you're working on has a land use code that's as similar as possible to what the applicant is proposing. And then that's what you use. And if the database is limited, well, you know, the world's not perfect, but this is, this is as good as you're going to get with ITE for a site like this. You're not going to use Mini Warehouse or something like that. You would use this, realizing that, you know, you are a little bit out of the bounds, but you're right on that, that projection line.
Mr. Tavani, there's been reference to P5 as your report. I do not see a letter, a summary with your seal as a professional engineer anywhere in this pack of P5.
You're right.
Are you able to...
The only thing I prepared really is this. Everything else is just a regurgitation of things either from Google or the applicant's own exhibits. I mean, if, if it pleases the board, I would be happy to amend P5 to include a cover letter, whatever the board would like to see. But I gave a disclosure right at the outset that the majority of this is really just an assemblage of information, including the applicant's own exhibits, presented in a different way.
We could also correct that by asking opinion questions at the conclusion of his testimony.
So, the, you, you've, you've attached selected pages from a Panoni report that's 20 months old, something like that. Do you have the, do you, are you essentially assuming into here all of the Panoni assumptions that went into their report?
Let me make it easy for everybody. Freak, just forget about all the PennDOT stuff.
All the what?
Forget all the PennDOT stuff. This is the problem with this site. This is the problem, is this access. And there are things the applicant can do to remedy this that they're not proposing, like restrict left turns out of certain driveways. That would make it fundamentally much safer. But if I were a board member, the question I would be asking is, is this increase in traffic, does, does, does this make sense? Knowing that we have access that evolved possibly over a half a century, was probably never permitted by PennDOT? This is an SR. Haverford Road is a state route. My understanding in Pennsylvania that there's no grandfathering of permits. Either you have one or you don't. And the only time that PennDOT ever becomes aware of whether or not you have a highway occupancy permit is when someone tells them, hey, they're applying to do something here. Do they have a permit? They don't just, they don't have the money, manpower, or mandate to go knocking on doors.
I'm going to object. I have no idea if PennDOT has a...
We're, we're way, way, way ahead.
Way past.
The, the access here is not ideal.
And we're not going to bet you, anyway.
Yeah.
Mr. Tavani?
Yeah.
You had an opportunity to review the applicant's traffic engineering report, correct?
Yes.
Do you agree with his opinion that the level of service is not adversely affected by the addition of the convenience in this location?
I, I did not investigate that specifically, but I have no reason to doubt his opinion. The only, the only caveat I would add is, he put a lot of traffic going out making this left turn that we're talking about, as opposed to going out directly to Haverford Road. It could have been that he assigned the traffic to this driveway because it was proportional to how traffic presently distributes itself over those three driveways. It could be because he knew there's a signal here that makes it a little bit easier to make a left turn onto Haverford Road, instead of attempting to do that directly from one of the driveways on Haverford. I didn't replicate it. I wasn't present when he did his calculations. But it seems like it's a little overweighted where that silver car is, and there's no queuing at all on Buck Lane.
Do you agree with Mr. Horner's testimony? Strike that. Do you believe that the time of taking of the traffic calculation is important to a consideration, the amount of, the impact of traffic?
Yeah, thank you for reminding me about that. So, the, the counts were conducted during the summer. I've sometimes conducted counts during the summer for projects. I've been doing this for 30 years, and sometimes that happens. And it, it could just be that an applicant wants a traffic study and it happens to be summertime. But what I always do is caution the applicant that this could be an issue, that we might have to do counts again later. And then I look at context, and I say, is this near a school? Is this in an area where, you know, people may take summer vacations? And this is a wealthy area, you know, Bryn Mawr, Villanova. It's possible that traffic is driven down a little bit because people just aren't present. More importantly, there's a number of institutions in very close proximity to this site. You have the Haverford School. You have the Barack Academy. You have Baldwin, Haverford College, Villanova University. I mean, with the applicant's traffic engineer said earlier about that there's these like generic numbers you can look at for how traffic flows change, like month to month? They exist, but, I mean, they're like very broad. They don't look at the context of a particular location. I would, I, I would wager a bet that if you did the counts now, it would be higher.
I'm going to object. We shouldn't be wagering bets.
Okay, well, you get the idea.
It's a matter of...
Yeah.
You can continue your question, representing wagering bets.
Yeah, I think the counts were low. I think doing counts in the summer is not a good idea at this location. Make it very plain.
You have an opinion as to the number of parking spaces would be appropriate for the combined or proposed use?
Yes.
What is that opinion?
Going to object to that. Either it, it, what his opinion is, it's what's in the ordinance. If they want to change the ordinance, I agree, that would be the opinion to give to the supervisors to change the ordinance.
You still, I don't think his opinion is to...
Yeah.
I apologize. Chairman, I didn't, I didn't hear the question or the objection.
Question is whether he had an opinion as to what the appropriate number of parking spaces for the combined use of services of the, of the fuel station and the convenience store should be.
And he's offering, and the question is offering that as an expert in traffic?
Correct.
Your objection?
Yeah, that would be an opinion given to the board of supervisors. You're going to change your parking counts and your parking spaces in your ordinance. We have to follow what your ordinance says.
But you're not, you're asking for less. I'm asking for a variance, so you don't agree with it either.
Well, I, I think the question is, I understand what, what Mr. Kearney's trying to say. Look, even if there was a requirement, or even if his opinion was, you know, there should definitely be more parking spaces here. If the applicant was able to provide, and I understand that we're pressing a variance, if the applicant was able to provide full amount of parking the code requires, testimony wouldn't matter.
But that's not the question. They're proposing less. So, the question is, is proposing less in...
I think he testified that there's, at least to him, he believes that there is sufficient parking on the side.
If you're willing to accept that as his testimony?
Well, I think that's what he, I think that's what he said.
Are all the opinions that you render here, meaning rendered through a reasonable degree of traffic engineering certainty?
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions?
Okay. Mr. Tavani, let's take a look at this, oh, I'm sorry. Back to that one?
Sure.
And again, as one of the zoning hearing board members indicated, the smallest size on here is 3,000, correct?
It appears that the smallest empirical data point is approximately 3,200 square feet.
And do they, do you know, do they use, are they using Wawa's, Royal Farms, Sheets?
I don't know.
Do you know if they use a convenience store such as this that does not have any grilling or cooking, and is just prepackaged items?
Same answer. I don't know.
You had indicated, and I'm not sure what pages these are. Mine are not in color, so it's a little...
I apologize.
Different. The pictures that you were referring to, are those pictures that you took?
Nope, these are from Google Maps Street View.
As part of the Haverford Road Corridor Safety Improvement, or are they just separate? It's unclear where the Haverford thing slideshow ends, and where these, are these photos part of that slideshow or just something totally separate?
This is the last slide. That's an exhibit from the PennDOT materials. And then the site plan with the red arrows that I added is from the applicant, and I just added red arrows. The photos, if you look in the upper-left...
Wait, wait, it's a, I'm having a little...
Yeah, sure.
You're saying this is the last page, or that is something you did?
That's something I did. What you just, the page before that is the last page from the PennDOT material.
Okay, so the, the three photos are just Google Earth photos you obtained?
Yeah, specifically, if you look in the upper-left corner, it says "Google Street View". So, if you go to googlemaps.com and you type in this address, it's called "Dropping a Pin". You just click hard on this area of Haverford Road. It'll give you the option to get this view from the street. And then it gives you the option to pick different dates. In the upper-left, you see this says "November 2017", and then it says "See latest date". If you click on that, it gives you a whole menu you can choose from of different dates.
Why didn't you pick 2017 as your date?
I think these were the most recent available.
And they don't give you the times of day?
No.
Okay.
Just month and year.
Just, I'm sorry?
Just month and year.
And you... And, um... If, uh, and again... If, uh, and again... If the, whatever they may be, the improvements that you were suggesting that the Haverford Road Corridor Safety Improvement project were done, there's nothing that precludes, this project doesn't preclude those from being done?
No, this project does not affect PennDOT's ability to make changes to Haverford Road.
Do you agree that the property is zoned to permit a convenience store?
Objection, it's not what the ordinance says.
I really don't know what is permitted under the zoning. I didn't review the zoning.
Well, I'm answering the question.
I'm sorry?
I think you can answer the question whether you knew the answer or not, and the answer you didn't know.
Okay. So you didn't review the zoning ordinance?
Correct.
And you recognize that some of the photos that you were showing, when the auto repair shop is still in existence? And one of the, I think you had indicated that you're generally, and I can't recall exactly how you phrased it, generally that you agree that Mr. Horner's traffic impact study was conservative in the, how it determined the trip generation, the LOS?
I don't know if I specifically said that. I think I said, I really did not review that aspect of it, and I have no reason to doubt that his conclusions are accurate.
So the LOS, his conclusions as his, the LOSs are acceptable, you would agree with that?
Well, again, as I said, I didn't really review them, so I can't comment on it other than to give Mr. Horner the credit he's owed, which is, I believe he did it as correctly as he would any of his projects. I focused on the access primarily.
Can I take a one-minute break?
Okay, we're back.
I don't think I have any other questions.
Any?
Any?
Any? Any? Any? Billy, you guys have questions for, any other questions? Jess, Ed, neither of you?
Thank you kindly.
So where does that leave us, now that we're a few minutes away from-
Yeah, I was thinking it's probably a good natural break, right?
Yeah. We'll do the dates. Now, October 17th is our next regular meeting, but we have four or five cases that night already.
And we've, or we've got an issue with the fourth.
Another special meeting.
Thursday.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Want to come back? Should we go off the record for this?
You mean the third? Or the 24th?
Yeah. I, so this is like-
I won't be here for it.
So Bill, the bill's point is pick that date.
Yeah, you know what? Yeah, I do. Yeah, yeah. That's something.
I'm a Jesseist.
Jesse, Jesse, one second.
Okay. She only has the comments on this, right?
Yes.
Counsel, what do you, what about Wednesday to Thursday? You know, it's not a Thursday, we're trying to accommodate our-
Yeah. Is it available, 30 to 3?
I don't know.
Nobody knows.
Actually a business meeting for us. It is, it's a normal meeting. Well, we're trying to do the 7th, which is a normal night for us, and what we're talking with, Jonathan is, if it's only, kind of build maybe only one small case, if we can, if we get any applications in, rather than make this one the primary one, we can put the other ones off. Get high waivers anyway from them, so we can just work our schedules.
7th.
That works for you. All right. That works for you. All right. So why don't we do November 7th then?
7:30?
Uh, yes. That's a-
So then, Counsel, just to confirm, November 7th is an okay date to continue this matter to?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so at... How many more witnesses?
Oh, two, I'm sorry.
And I think you two as well, maybe?
Two or three, maybe.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe, I mean, there may be others who wish to testify and honor represent.
Yeah, okay.
And public comment, right.
Okay, so I think at this point it's a-
There'll never be getting rid of us, you know?
It's a natural point in the case to stop. Obviously, the record remains open, and we'll continue this case to our regular meeting night of November 7th at 7:30. Counsel, I know you probably have done this before, but I just want to make sure and get this on the record. Obviously, everybody waives the applicable time periods under the MPC to allow us to continue this matter.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.